Good evening. Good evening, please take your seats. We are a full house tonight, please take your seats, we're gonna bring this meeting to order. I would like to first read the city's land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather, and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood, is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabrioleño Tongva and the Gabrioleño Quiche peoples. I'm calling the September fifteenth, 2025 City Council meeting to order, it is 6:01 PM. And will we please have Tom DeMille join us to lead in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Love you too. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Hang.
Present.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Here.
Mayor Byers.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight from staff?
Yes, Mayor, staff is requesting that Item B five, which is a request to adopt ordinance number two-five-two-zero on second reading, and an update on equitable building performance standards, or EBPS, be tabled to a date uncertain. Staff is also requesting that Item E one, which is the update on Fountain Avenue Streetscape Project Phase One, be heard as the first business item after approval of the consent calendar.
Terrific, and are there any other changes for my colleagues? Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if we could move up the commu-- uh, move to consent the cosponsorship of the Community Blood Drive?
Which item is that?
I'm sorry, F six, I'll use actual numbers.
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna see if we can move F five, the nonviolent city resolution. Great, I'm gonna keep going. The recognition of Light the World in Teal Initiative for Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Oh, the F two, cosponsorship of West Hollywood Recovery Center's Halloween event?
Yep.
Okay. I'll let F one, if someone wants to move that on my own.
How about F one?
Sounds good, I'm happy to do that. Additionally, do we wanna talk about E two?
That's the organizational.
The organizational structure one? The E two organizational structure and updates approving adding one full-time equivalent position, eliminating three full-time equivalent positions in the fiscal year citywide salary schedule? Okay.
Yeah.
To consent, yep. There's no appetite for the fire zone D one, is there? There is?
We can move it to consent.
And I think I've done my, my job here, Mayor.
I'm fine with moving D one to consent. I do have a couple of questions or comments I'd like to make about it, but I can do that under Councilmember comments.
And so what we have left on the agenda then is our public hearing, which has been moved to after D one, I'm sorry, E one. And we have the E three at-large appointments, and then we have F three, the West Hollywood Entertainment Zone.
Is there an appetite to do the transgender advisory board one now and just get it done with, I mean before everything else?
It's just an approval, cuz it's a recommendation from staff for two appointees at large, so unless--
I'll move it to consent.
We'll move it to consent.
Move it to consent. And we also have the designation of the voting delegates for the League, which is F seven.
That needs to be a voting item?
Yeah, we need to, we should take a vote cuz I have to send that to the League.
Okay.
So we're okay with moving F-- No, I can't, E three, okay. Okay, so I have D one, E two, E three, F one, F two, F four, F five, F six. B five is being tabled and E one being heard as the first business item. And with that, we have a motion on the floor to approve tonight's consent calendar.
No, the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, the agenda.
The agenda.
Getting ahead of myself. Thank you.
Good catch.
And the motion passes five zero.
Terrific, thank you. We'll move on to Levine Act disclosures. Are there any disclosures that my colleagues need to make tonight? No?
No.
No.
Yes?
Mayor, I engaged in discussion with the appellant.
You can name that during the public hearing itself, thank you. Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to adjournment motions. Do any of my colleagues have any adjournment motions this evening? Councilmember Meister, please begin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to adjourn tonight in memory of John Mulcrone, longtime West Hollywood resident who died at home in his sleep on September second with his cat by his side. John was the husband of Steve Martin, former council member and mayor. Originally from Chicago, John moved to West Hollywood from San Francisco in nineteen ninety-one to be with Steve. While he was always surrounded by local politicians and politics and fully supported Steve, John was never really political, but he became lifelong friends with many active community members. With a wry sense of humor and deadpan delivery, John always found a way to bring a unique perspective to matters at hand and lighten the mood. John and Steve were married on October thirtieth, two thousand and eight, just days before Prop eight repealed the right of same-gender couples to get married. They were together for thirty-four years. Our sincere condolences to Steve and his family and friends. May John rest in peace.
Thank you, Councilmember Meister. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Carmelita Wilson. Carmelita Wilson worked for the city. She was hired in November twenty-twenty-three as a temporary lifeguard. She quickly expressed interest in teaching swim lessons and water fitness. She worked hard, she took opportunities for additional training. She was an excellent swim instructor. Families often requested her by name. She was active in the WeHo Water Fitness Community. She brought fun, love, and encouragement to the water fitness classes. Her contributions to the Aquatics Center will not be forgotten. Outside of aquatics, Carmelita worked at the YMCA as a spinning instructor. She was a creative soul, an author, a content creator, daughter, granddaughter, sister, girlfriend, and a friend to many. There will be a memorial honoring Carmelita this Wednesday from eleven-thirty to two-thirty PM. The memorial is open to staff and the community. All are welcome and invited to join us in honoring our beloved Carmelita. It's been a very difficult time for our rec staff, particularly the swim, the employees who work at the swimming pool. So I hope everyone will extend their condolences to her friends and to her family.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other adjournment motions tonight, my colleagues? Okay, thank you so much. We'll move on to presentations, and I believe we just have the one presentation tonight, although I do wanna thank again Tom DeMille for helping lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We really appreciate seeing you back here in council chambers. So we'll move into the presentation tonight, and that is to recognize Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. As we know, September is National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, which is an opportunity to raise awareness of this disease, encourage women to get the facts and recognize the signs of the disease, and to raise money for additional research. According to the American Cancer Society, almost twenty-two thousand women in the United States are diagnosed with ovarian cancer each year, and many are diagnosed too late for effective treatment. Ovarian cancer ranks fifth in cancer deaths among women, accounting for more deaths than any other cancer of any, of the female reproductive system. Ovarian cancer symptoms are often very subtle and may be difficult to detect. Early detection is critical to saving the lives of those affected as women diagnosed at an early stage, before the cancer has spread, have survival rates exceeding ninety percent. Since it was founded in two thousand and eleven, the Ovarian Cancer Circle, inspired by Robin Babini, has expanded education, support, and advocacy for women and families affected by ovarian cancer with support from the City of West Hollywood. The Ovarian Cancer Circle has also highlighted the work of Dr. Sinaz-- I'm gonna mess up this last name, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Mammarzada, a board-certified gynecological oncologist at UCLA and the West Los Angeles Veterans Hospital, who has made pioneering contributions to ovarian cancer treatment and research. Tonight, the City of West Hollywood recognizes the Ovarian Cancer Circle and the many accomplishments in helping to advance this research. We appreciate you so much, and we're really proud to recognize you, so please come join us at the dais for recognition. Thank you.
Natalie, 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 Natalie. So hold it up so they can see it. Is this working? Yes. Okay, how can the people see this? Turn it around? Oh, okay. But I speak to you guys.
Yes, that's right.
Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor John Hillman, and esteemed City Council members. My name is Paulinda Babini, and I am the proud founder of the Ovarian Cancer Circle, inspired by Robin, my beloved daughter, who tragically lost her life to this devastating disease at the young age of twenty. On behalf of our dedicated Circle team, including our Vice President Natalie Minyon and myself, I extend our deepest gratitude to Vice Mayor Hillman and Councilmember Erickson for your ongoing support, and to Mayor Byers and all the council members. Thank you for once again recognizing September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month and lighting the lanterns along Santa Monica Boulevard in teal, the national color for ovarian cancer. Your commitment to this cause for the fourth consecutive year is deeply meaningful and appreciated. One of the pillars of the Circle's mission in raising awareness, we work tirelessly to educate women about the symptoms, risk factors, and the critical importance of early detection, vital information that can help and does save lives. I give out these bookmarks. Talks about the symptoms and how to be proactive. It's important to remember ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading gynecologic cancer death in the United States. Awareness is not optional, it's essential. In addition to awareness, we are passionately committed to funding innovative research. The Circle proudly supports the work of Dr. Sinazma Marzadeh at UCLA's GeoDiscovery Lab. Though she is unable to be with us tonight, she is incredibly grateful for this recognition. Since founding the Circle fifteen years ago, and many of you were there from the beginning, we have raised over one million dollars to fund groundbreaking research aimed at better understanding this disease and developing more effective treatments. Ovarian cancer deserves a much more prominent place in the public conversation. Tonight, through your visible and continued support, you're helping to make that a reality. I truly believe if I had known what, if I had known then what I know now, my daughter Robin would be here today sharing her story herself. Thank you for helping to shine a light on ovarian cancer and for standing with us to fight against saving women's lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again for being here tonight and sharing her story and reminding us of all these responsibilities we have as a community to care for each other. We're gonna move into public comment now. The City Council values your comments. However, pursuant to the Brown Act, the Council cannot take action on items not listed on tonight's posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to twenty minutes, with two minutes allotted for each speaker. This public comment period is to address the City Council on consent calendar items and other items if the member of the public cannot be present at the time the item is considered or items of general interest within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Another period is reserved for general public comment later in the meeting for those that could not be heard in this first portion of time. Public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of the hearing. I understand that we have a number of speakers signed up tonight, so we may bend some of these rules a little bit, let's hear how much? Sorry, City Clerk?
Yes, we have twenty-seven individuals in chambers signed up to speak. We have two in Zoom with one for consent calendar. And I have, I have six individuals in chambers to speak on consent calendar items.
Okay, so that will take us past our twenty-minute allotted time. I do think, well, one second. We are going to, I think, in order to hear from as many people as possible, given the many items of importance that I know members of the general public wanna come to tonight, I think it may serve us well to reduce the two-minute limit to ninety seconds. And I hope that we're all supportive of our ability to hear from as many people as possible tonight. It will still mean we may not be able to hear from everyone. So if you are able to stay through the end of the meeting, and that's something you're already planning to do, I would ask that you wait to share your comments that you would have shared in the beginning till the end if your name comes up and you're able to do so, to allow for as many members of the public to go first. I just wanna ask for the respect of everybody in this crowd, it's a very full room. I see some people still struggling to find seats in the back and hope that we can help scoot in and make sure people feel like they have a seat to have tonight's meeting. And I just wanna remind us that we cannot bring any other items up to the agenda other than your written comments, so no signs or photos or anything like that that becomes distracting for the crowd or makes it hard for people to see what's happening. And I think with that, we'll call up our first speaker, who I know has to get back because of a wheelchair power issue, so we'll hear from Tom DeMille, and then we'll move on to the rest of the speaker list.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm Tom DeMille, I've worked for public office four times.
Wait, hold on, Tom, one second.
I never lost because the people that are friends of mine and back, look at all the friends I made, how could I ever have lost, you know, with that? Why I'm here is that I'm a disabled actor, and I live in a building with forty people. John, you were at the dedication. Lauren, you've been there a few times. The Access Fund of America had built it because I'm a disabled actor. There's forty units there, and we've lost seventy-five people since I dedicated the building. That's my war, that's the AIDS war still happening to me. I worked at the cemetery Hollywood Forever for ten years. I've been a cemetery and a historian there for ten years. What it gave me, both things, it gave me respect and dignity and decency towards others, but I had to earn that. A lot of human beings don't get decency and respect, and that type of thing is less than you earn it, okay? What I saw with Charlie-- Help me with this last name, Charlie Kirk. What I saw from him this last week was just visceral and terrible stuff, and that's not who we are, West Hollywood. We care about people, all the people who die, we care about. We have the respect and the dignity, that's why we put the flags up. If the gay people don't wanna be part of the dignity and the decency and the respect for the people who died, then take down their flags from the gay polls and the lesbian polls and let our American flags, we want you to fly them with us. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna take this type of behavior.
Thank you, Tom.
We all have to act with respect and decency towards one another.
Tom.
And that's how we gain respect from others.
Thank you.
I'm not ready to lose that, thank you very much.
Tom? Have that be removed, thank you. Thank you, Greg. I'm going to call up the next couple of speakers so we can move as quick as possible through this list. So we have Greg Rang at the mic, Jacob Shaw, and then Mikey Mars after that.
Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Heilman, esteemed City Council and city staff. Greg Rang, Executive Director of the West Hollywood Design District. To expedite, I just wanna say thank you for your support and leadership in championing arts and culture. They lift our community and drive our economy. Thank you very much for supporting Art Walk, and my gratitude to you. Good night.
Thank you. Jacob Shaw, followed by, I think it's Mickey Mars, and Vanessa Marsow.
Thank you, Council, I'll be very, very brief. I just wanted to thank you so much for taking on this expanded retail animal sales ban. I know sometimes these animal issues may seem small, you know, in a long, very full agenda, but to the fish, whose home is the ocean, but spends their life circling endlessly in a small tank, or a bird who should be flying in the sky, who sits for thirty years or more alone in a cage, it's all the difference in the world. So thank you so much for, for doing this, you're wonderful people.
Thank you. Mickey Mars, followed by Vanessa Marsow. And I'll ask that the clapping keep to a minimum too, just so we can keep moving, thank you.
On B six, I thank you for your compassion and supporting the ban on the retail sale of small animals. I urge your continued support in the final adoption of, of this ordinance because it will prevent the suffering and death of many small animals. They not only die in the breeding mills, but also during transport because of the horrifically abusive conditions where almost one-third of them suffocate, starve, or dehydrate to death. I also encourage pet store owners to showcase rescued animals from shelters and educate pet owners about the importance of buying habitats with the maximum amount of space. Regarding E one, I oppose E one, the fountain project. During the January sunset fire, there was severe gridlock on the fountain, and all side streets-- all the side streets were gridlocked also. In another fire, how will people be able to save themselves if you remove two lanes of the road? Will they suffer or die from smoke inhalation because they can't get away from the smoke or a fire? Thank you.
I will remind the public that this is for general public comment or items on consent. If the item is really, if your comment is related to an item that is still on the agenda, please stay for that moment on the calendar to respect everyone's time, thank you. We have Vanessa Marsow, followed by Justine Block, followed by Liz Cabrera-Holtz.
Good evening, City Council members. I'm representing In Defense of Animals, which is an international animal rescue and protection organization. With over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand supporters and a forty-year history, we defend animals, the environment, and their guardians through education and campaigns. We applaud the City Council for approving an expanded ban on the retail sale of animals. Most animals sold in California pet stores, ranging from birds and reptiles to small mammals, come from cruel breeding mills. These animals often suffer in captivity as many lack federal protection and cannot thrive in human homes. We appreciate your vote supporting final adoption of this important ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Justine Block, followed by Liz Cabrera-Holtz, followed by John Hayes.
Good evening, City Council members, I will be brief. Also, I'm Justine Block, an attorney and resident of West Hollywood for over twenty years. I support and very much appreciate your approval of the ordinance expanding a ban on the retail sale of animals in our city. I'm also grateful for Mayor Byers and the entire City Council's leadership on this issue. I support the City expanding its current animal sales ban to include not only cats and dogs, but adding other small mammals, amphibians, arachnids, birds, fish, hermit crabs, as well as reptiles. These animals suffer from inhumane breeding practices and conditions in which many of them are kept. Prohibiting the sale of animals also encourages adoptions, allowing pet, um, pet stores to instead focus on showcasing animals in need of loving homes. Thank you for approving this historic ordinance to help end the suffering of animals sold at pet stores.
Thank you. Liz Cabrera-Holtz, followed by John Hayes, followed by Kim Frederick.
Hi, my name is Liz Cabrera-Holtz, and I'm the Senior Campaigns Manager at World Animal Protection. I'm also here to thank the Council for considering this life-saving ordinance that would ban the retail sale of animals. This ordinance will protect animals from extreme suffering, preserve biodiversity, and ease the pressure on shelters and rescues overwhelmed with small animals. So thank you again to Mayor Byers for her support and the Council.
Thank you. John Hayes, followed by Kim Frederick, followed by Jeff Morello.
Hello, I'm just here to support my colleagues here for being glad that you guys are doing this, basically. So, as someone who was born and raised in LA County and as a longtime resident of West Hollywood for nearly twenty-three years-- Hollywood for nearly 23 years, that would be me, and as a supporter of animals, I greatly appreciate that my city leaders want to completely ban the sale of animals for profit. Like any sentient being in the U.S. and in the 21st century, no animals should be exploited and cruelly used for money. Let's continue to be the change that West Hollywood represents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kim Frederick, followed by Jeff Morello, followed by Slade Lynn. Thank you all so much for helping us move through this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and West Hollywood City Council.
Speak a little bit into the mic, but yeah, thank you. It's okay.
I appreciate this opportunity to be here on behalf of JVS SoCal at our WeHo Works program. My name is Kim Frederick. I'm the Chief Program Officer. You may be familiar with Andy Sacher. He is, lives in West Hollywood. He manages our WeHo Works program. Unfortunately, he is sick today and unable to be here, so I am standing here on his behalf. Again, I appreciate the opportunity for this opportunity to make comments. I want to thank you for your ongoing support of JVS SoCal for our job readiness and job placement services. As we wind down the current year, we're on track to meeting our enrollment goals of 104 WeHo community members, engagement with over 100 businesses, and reaching our goal of placing 80 individuals into employment. We are concerned about the reduction that we received in our current funding, down from $203,914 to $187,408. And just wanted to note, I understand that in past years, sometimes we have not fully expended. However, we have addressed those things coming out of COVID. We have a very strong staff. We are actually on track to fully expending our funds this year. So I just ask for your consideration as we want to maintain the three staff we have and continue their work in the community over the next three years to consider restoring funding and just also cost of living over the next three years as this contract continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Morello, followed by Slade Lynn, followed by Shannon Axe. Is Jeff Morello not here? Okay. We're going to go to Slade Lynn, followed by Shannon Axe, followed by Marvin Greenhouse.
Slade Lynn, 38-year resident of City West Hollywood. Regarding Streetscape, a couple of things I want you.
Oh, we have, that's item E1. We're going to hold that for the actual item. It's the next one right after public comment, though. Thank you so much. Shannon Axe, followed by Marvin Greenhouse, followed by Mike Nuttall.
Shannon Axe. I began living as myself at just seven years old as a trans kid. I didn't always have the safety or affirmation that every child deserves, but I survived. As an adult, I dedicated my life to making sure today's trans youth do not have to feel the same isolation I once felt. This is why what has happened here in West Hollywood has, this is why what happened here in West Hollywood shook me so deeply. Seeing our flags flown at half-staff to honor Charlie Kirk, a man whose words and actions have repeatedly harmed transgender people and especially trans kids, was not just disappointing, it was devastating. For me and for many others, these flags are not just fabric. They are a lifeline. They tell us you are safe here, you are valued here, you belong here. To lower them in recognition of someone who has denied our humanity, felt like erasing our dignity, and as a proud trans woman, I am here to say that West Hollywood has been a beacon, a place of hope and visibility and pride. But when we honor voices that have tried to silence us, when we risk dimming the light, I know that we can choose to stand firmly with the most vulnerable among us. Tonight, I ask you to remember who is watching.
Shannon. 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 Thank you. Thank you. We're going to bring the room back to order.
I'm Marvin Greenhouse. I've been a resident of West Hollywood, going on 50 years now, come December. Two things. First, I want to express my strong opposition to the Fountain Avenue plan. It's bad news for a number of reasons. Number two, I want to talk about Thunder Road Motorcycle and Coffee Shop. Yesterday, from 9:00 a.m. in the morning till 8 o'clock on a Sunday, they had an event of about 200 people jammed into their parking lot that sits right outside our living room, kitchen, and bedroom windows. Needless to say, the noise was unbelievable with all the screaming and yelling and music going on. Finally, around 3:00, we finally decided to call Code Compliance. They came around 30 minutes later. What was talked about over there, I don't know, but the party kept going on. Around 6:00, Jason from Code Compliance called. He's a nice guy. And we talked for about 30 minutes. He told me about what the city can and cannot do. He told me he was giving them an administration citation for having a special event over there without getting the required permit from the city. This is just one example of the many things that have been going on over there for the last 27 years, constantly violating West Hollywood City ordinances and their CUP. We've called the city up many, many, many times. Nothing seems to get done.
Thank you, Marvin.
Please, help. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about four and a half minutes left. We're only going to be able to get through the next three or four speakers, depending on how they use their time. Please support this process. Thank you. Michael?
Hi there. I just, I missed the last couple of meetings where we elevated Acting Fanny Lapkin to Captain Fanny Lapkin. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, and I think a lot of people in the community that love and adore her, how much we appreciate her leadership in this community. And then on top of that, I also want to recognize the fact that we have a captain of the sheriffs that's female, a female mayor, another female council member, and a female Attorney General, which I think is something that, as a city, we should celebrate. And we celebrate our diversity and appreciate very much. And I think something that Hillary Clinton said, all those cracks in the glass ceiling, you guys helped with that, and you should be very proud of yourselves.
Thank you. Michael Greenfield, followed by Rick Watts, followed by Nick Roybal. And then we're going to go to the speakers who are supposed to speak on the consent calendar, which I forgot in Zoom. No, they're not there? Oh, okay, great. And as a reminder, we're only going to use this period to speak on the consent calendar general public comment. Okay, so we'll go to Rick Watts, followed by Nick Roybal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo the comments by Tom DeMille and by the speaker with respect to the lowering of the flags and the insult to the trans community that that represents. I like to suggest, I think most, everybody in here, I would hope, finds odious the views espoused by the person that we were ordered to lower the flags for by the person back in 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue. And I think that, given that there are so many other people that are victims of gun violence in this country on an almost daily basis, totaling now more than a million and a half since 1969, perhaps a way to soften the blows of that insult would be for Council to express that when flags are lowered for someone like that, that we also are lowering those flags in respect and memory of other, of all victims of senseless gun violence caused by the flood of more than 400 million weapons designed to kill people in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, Nick Roybal will be our last speaker for general public comment.
To a city and people I love, not in our name. Government, will you hear your betrayal? Government, will you own your deceit? Government, will you witness our hurt, pain, anger, sadness? Why did you lower the flags for a terrorist? A white, Christian nationalist? Why did you betray the charter and founders of this city? Will you lower the flags for the unhoused who die on our streets? Cyclists killed on Fountain? Israeli hostages being used as pawns by the Netanyahu far-right government? Children in Gaza City praying to taste chocolate that falls from the sky? I am a brown queer non-binary flag who comes from a southwest lineage of brown, de-tribalized, enslaved people. This flag, this brown body, will not be lowered for a terrorist who wanted me and our siblings dead. Not in our name. To a city and a people that I love, not in our name.
Thank you. That will conclude the public comment portion tonight. So if you've signed up and you didn't get a chance to speak, you'll be moved to the second public comment portion. I recognize that this may not support people's ability or schedule to stay till the end, but you are welcome to submit an email and to let us know what your public comment would have been tonight. We will move to the City Manager's Report, and just want to thank you all again for joining us for public comment. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and Community Members. I have a few comments for tonight. I'm happy to announce the opening of the city's Holloway interim housing program, developed in partnership with Essentia. The Holloway is a 20-room facility that provides short-term stays and supportive services to help people experiencing homelessness transition into permanent housing. We hope you will join us for a community open house on Tuesday, September 30th, at 5:30 p.m. at 8464 Holloway Drive. The open house will include a facility tour and opportunities to meet the program staff. Please RSVP at go-weho.org/hollowayopenhouse. We also invite community members to come out and meet the city's new unarmed security ambassador company, Allied Universal. These sessions will be held on September 16th and 23rd from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at Plummer Park. In addition to providing information about their services, there will be an opportunity for interested individuals to apply for employment with Allied Universal and serve within, serve within the city of West Hollywood. More information is available on the city's website online calendar. And lastly, I just, I want to thank all the speakers for their public comment this evening, especially those who spoke on the flag. I would like to take an opportunity to address some of the recent conversations about the city's flag. On Wednesday, September 20th, all flags in West Hollywood were lowered, excuse me, were lowered to half-staff in accordance with a presidential proclamation following the killing of Charlie Kirk. These flags remain lowered on September 11th in observance of the annual National Day of Remembrance honoring the victims of the 2001 terrorist attacks. Flags continued to fly at half-staff through sundown on Sunday, September 14th. Over the past several days, many community members have expressed deep concern about the city's position to comply with this presidential directive. In particular, there has been significant outrage regarding lowering the LGBTQ+ flags, which are prominently flown in our cities as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and community identity. As stated in the city's public statement issued yesterday, this action should not be interpreted as an expression of alignment with or endorsement of Mr. Kirk's political views or actions. Rather, the action was undertaken in accordance with the city's policy for recognitions and memorials. Within the policy, one of the instances in which flags are flown at half-staff is in compliance with presidential proclamations regarding lowering the flags. Under the United States Code, when flags of the states, when flags of states or cities are flown from adjacent staffs, no such flag may be placed above the flag of the United States of America. In accordance with flag protocol, the act of lowering the American flag required that all flags be lowered, including the LGBTQ+ flags. Historically, the city has followed such proclamations to honor the symbolic unity represented by the American flag and to demonstrate respect for the institution of government. However, we recognize that these are complex and unprecedented times, especially in regard to traditional customs and the actions of the current federal administration. In this context, clear communication was warranted related to following the flag lowering policy, and thoughtful considerations should be taken to update this policy. I acknowledge that this decision has caused pain and frustration for many people in our community. On October 20th, the City Council will discuss the city's flag policy and consider updates to ensure that appropriate, it appropriately reflects the values of West Hollywood. We invite all community members to participate in this important conversation by providing public comment. Your voices are valued, and we remain committed to decisions that reflect our shared values of inclusivity, transparency, and respect. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my sentence.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. We'll move to the fiscal impact on consent calendar. City Clerk, maybe have the fiscal impact statement on tonight's consent.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. The fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar with the addition of items D1, E2, E3, F1, F2, F4, F5, F6, and the removal of item B5 is $9,886,282 in expenditures, $0 in revenue, and $49,697 in waived fees. There is a motion and a second on the floor to adopt tonight's consent calendar.
And before I go, I'm just recusing myself from the Defense Diagnostics.
Okay. Noting the recusal of Councilmember Erickson from Defense Diagnostics on item, I believe it's B8.
B8.
Yes, item B8. And the motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all again for coming out to speak tonight. We're going to move into item E1, the update on the Fountain Avenue Streetscape Project Phase 1. Good evening. Take it away when you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and Community Members. My name is Nick Marisich. I'm the Director of Community Development, and I'm joined this night by a whole team of folks. So I want to make sure I'm able to introduce, and my computer's still turning on, but to my left is Jennifer Alkire, our Assistant Director of Community Development. Presenting tonight will be Chris Correio, our Senior Transportation Planner. We also have David Fenn, Senior Planner, Helen Collins, Public Works Director, and we have our consultant team, as well as folks here from Athens as well. So we have a big team. I'm sorry, I don't have all the names pulled up right in front of me right now, but we'll go ahead and get started. I'll hand it off to Chris for the presentation, if that's all right.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Councilmembers. Good evening, members of the public. Give me one moment to open up the presentation. All right. It's my pleasure to present the Fountain Avenue Streetscape Project. Before I get started, I have a presentation prepared that's approximately 15 to 20 minutes, although I can do a shortened version if it's a preference of the Council, or I can do the full version.
I think the full version's appropriate.
Full version? I'm hearing full from some and shortened from others.
I think we're saying full up here.
Full?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right. All right, so just to briefly go over some of the previous actions by Council on this project, or, excuse me, to go over first the actions requested of staff by Council, a review of the plans, the 30% conceptual plans, immediate traffic calming measures that have been proposed by staff to address speeding and safety concerns on Fountain, discussion of Phase 2 of the project, a proposed amendment to the agreement with Fair and Peers, a sequway exemption, and turning, existing turn restrictions, which I will touch on later. So to go over the background a little bit of this project, there have been, this project's come to Council many times over the years since March 2021, when a Protected Bike Way feasibility study was initiated by Council and most recently last September to receive the CARB grant in September 2024. So shifting to discuss the project area, Fountain in West Hollywood extends from La Cienega Boulevard to La Brea. It's approximately 1.85 miles. It's a almost entirely residential. It's a almost entirely residential with the exception of four to five businesses at Laurel Avenue, and it's classified as a collector's street, which primarily serves as neighborhood serving in the general plan. The project includes two phases. Phase one includes repaving of Fountain Avenue and near-term improvements that affixed to the surface of the street, so roadway striping, in-street planters, with the only hardscape element being extruded curb. Essentially extruded curb is a machine-formed concrete curb. It's faster to install and also easier to remove. The second phase of the project, phase two, includes civil improvements, so that would include sidewalk widening where feasible. It would include updated curb ramps, potentially street trees and street furniture and other elements that would be informed by a community-led visioning process. Fountain today has approximately 35,000 trips per day on average. 64% of those trips are not local, so they are commuter trips. Fountain was widened in the 1960s by LA County. However, the county never completed the widening, so we're left with segments of Fountain that are wider than other segments, leading to a somewhat unpredictable geometry. In addition, the city has peak hour parking restrictions, which are also known as anti-grid lock zones, which convert the parking lane into a travel lane during rush hour. Fountain has high vehicle speeds, especially in the evenings. There are three times more severe injuries and fatalities in our segment of Fountain in West Hollywood than in Los Angeles. When looking at crash data between 2013 and 2024, comparing Fountain to other streets in West Hollywood, Fountain represents 36% of the fatal crashes that occur in West Hollywood, despite making up only 4% of the roadway network. This data is from the statewide integrated traffic record system, also known as SWITERS, and is publicly available. This graphic shows data from 2013 to 2025. The sheriff's department was able to provide preliminary 2025 data, although it is not on the public server yet. And as you can see, there are fatalities that have occurred and that really have touched every travel mode, with most occurring to motor vehicles. The graphic on the lower right shows the correlation between speeds and your likelihood of surviving in a collision as a pedestrian or cyclist. There's also a strong correlation between, for motor vehicles as well, and the severity of an impact. Also noteworthy is that Caltrans has established crash reduction factors that are based on statistically significant research. So 45% of pedestrian and bicycle crashes, we see a 45%, excuse me, reduction with separated bikeways for pedestrians and cyclists. And for all crashes, when a lane is removed, you see a 35% reduction in crashes. So shifting to the proposed project. The project would convert Fountain into a one-lane street. In order to do this, parking would be removed, or, excuse me, the project would convert Fountain into a one-lane street. It would remove parking from the north side of the street in order to create enough space for protected bike lanes. Most parking would remain on the south side of the street, however, some spaces would be removed as well to create enough space for the floating parking design and painted curb extensions. The plans currently leave the existing turn restrictions on Fountain in place, although that's something we're looking for council input on. The project also adds high-visibility crosswalks and is, was designed to slow vehicle speeds and to reduce volumes. So through the community engagement process, these are the key topic areas that we've heard from the community on, and I'm going to briefly touch on each. For traffic and circulation, the city's traffic model estimates approximately a 40% reduction on Fountain, with traffic being diverted to Sunset and Hollywood Boulevard to the north. Less of a reduction, or a diversion, rather, is anticipated for Santa Monica Boulevard because there is less capacity, and there is an increase anticipated on Willoughby. It's worth noting, on the western stretch of Willoughby, currently traffic volumes are quite low. There are approximately 2,000 trips per day, which is why such a large increase is estimated there. Also, the city has a separate project, a traffic calming project that is currently idle, that would install traffic circles on Willoughby that could potentially help further reduce cut-through traffic. Engagement with emergency services personnel was an important part of this project. The LA County Fire Department reviewed plans with city staff, and there were several rounds of review and feedback that was received during that review, which helped influence the design of curbs and helped us avoid using vertical features that the fire department asked us not to use, so that hoses could be placed across when responding to or putting out a fire. The plans were stamped and approved in April 2025. We also met with the fire chief, assistant fire chief, to present the project and discuss any, make sure that any potential operational decision, additional feedback would be necessary, and we also met with the local, with the LA County Sheriff's Department to discuss the project. And the sheriff, as I mentioned before, provided preliminary crash data to assist in that So as attachment D, there is a parking analysis that was conducted by Chen Ryan Associates. There's a lot of information here, so I'm just going to briefly summarize. Essentially, what the parking analysis looked at was utilization rates in a corridor from La Cienega to La Brea between Sunset and Santa Monica Boulevard. It includes portions of Los Angeles. And what's noteworthy, that I just want to draw your attention to, is, and consistent with what we've heard from community members, is that the utilization rates on Fountain itself are quite low. This is just one table of many tables that are in the attachment, but you can see that at some times of the day, parking utilization on Fountain is 37%, which is quite low. Also, generally speaking, the study shows that there is capacity in the neighborhoods. There's a great degree of variance from neighborhood to neighborhood throughout the community, and the area that's most impacted is surrounding Plummer Park. So I just have a couple visuals to show how this data was presented graphically. You can see, when you look at Fountain, that this is a graphic showing utilization without the project and with the project. So you can see that there is a change that results from the project. So shifting to potential solutions to address parking. One of the potential solutions that is under consideration to address parking in the western segment of Fountain is where the project would result in a loss of 50 parking spaces in this, in this segment. One of the ideas or concepts is to allow residential permit parking holders to park at the new public parking facility at Santa Monica and Crescent Heights. The idea is that that could help relieve some of the pressure off of the neighborhoods that are most impacted and free up parking for others to fill in those spaces. Obviously, this wouldn't serve everyone in the neighborhood, and it's a rather far walk for some, but by reducing capacity in the neighborhood south of Fountain, it can help all parkers. The next solution is really contingent upon the last solution being effective, so I'll caveat it with that, and it requires further review by the parking division to ensure that it can be implemented and enforced. But the concept is, we could allow residents of Fountain to have greater flexibility to park in either District 6 or 7 by establishing a new district just for Fountain Avenue residents and those with an address on Fountain. And this really requires a previous solution to work so that the issue of fairness between districts is not a concern. The third concept to address parking is on the east side, where the neighborhoods around Plummer Park currently are the most heavily parked, even aside from this project. So the idea is that Fountain residents in this stretch of the east side of Fountain Avenue would be able to park overnight at Plummer Park. There are 108 parking spaces in Plummer Park, and 66 spaces would be removed off Fountain due to the project in this area. There are some constraints, of course, that they would be competing with park use. They would have to be out of the park by 8:00 AM, and there are events like the farmer's market when no one can park. Shifting to waste collection, so the city worked closely with Athens Services and did a parcel-by-parcel review of the needs of each property in terms of staging of trash bins. And on the plans, you will see places generally where there are curb extensions but not enough space for parking, where you would see small barrels placed. And then on the plans, you'll also see square areas that have a little trash icon where the larger bins would be staged for pickup. For loading and deliveries, as the project removes parking from the north side of Fountain entirely, westbound travelers, anyone traveling westbound would need to load from a side street with this layout. Currently, loading on Fountain is restricted during non-peak hour, during the anti-grid lock zone times. And we just wanted to note that the block lengths are quite small, between 300 to 400 feet in the east side, a little bit shorter than that. So shifting to the schedule, so if council were to take an action on the project this evening, for phase one, design would continue, and it's estimated that it could, under an accelerated schedule, conclude by June with construction beginning in the fall and concluding in early winter or spring of 2027. Fees two, if project were to approve and authorize staff to move forward, we would move forward with releasing a request for proposals in October and start to assemble a consultant team and start to form a larger steering committee to shepherd that process. So shifting now to the immediate or interim safety improvements that have been discussed separate from this project to address safety concerns on Fountain. One thing that has been discussed is installing leading pedestrian intervals. These are essentially headstarts given to crossing pedestrians. This work has already begun. They have been added recently to eight crosswalks on Fountain, and there are only a few remaining, which will be completed very shortly. Also, there's a separate project underway that Public Works has in progress to install these LPIs citywide. Another consideration is setting traffic signals to recall in the corridor. That would present more red lights along the corridor. It would slow traffic. It also would provide the walk sign for pedestrians automatically without touching the buttons. It puts the lights on a timed loop, essentially, and that could be completed as soon as, within two to three weeks, we contract with LA County for signal work, so as soon as that they could service the city. The third option for interim or immediate safety improvements is the idea of eliminating the peak hour parking restrictions now. The idea with that is that you would narrow the roadway, and it could slow speeding. It also has the added effect of parking being available all day. As we have looked at this solution a little closer, we've realized that it may require some additional analysis. Because of the width of the roadway, and you can see in this graphic below, this is essentially showing the width of Fountain, there may be places where an edge line would need to be striped onto the road or emerging lane to make this happen safer, and because we wouldn't be removing a lane consistently across the corridor, it could lead to traffic backups into neighborhoods, whereas the full lane removal would not have that effect because it's completely removing capacity. This would not be removing capacity. It would be doing it in sort of isolated bursts. So we're having second thoughts about whether or not this is worth doing if council were to move forward with phase one. This is just a list of community outreach and noticing that's been done for this project. For several years, there have been online surveys done, social media outreach, there's been workshops, both virtual and in person. Over the summer, the community outreach has really ramped up. We held a community meeting in August at Plummer Park, and there have been subsequent commission meetings, and we tried to reach out to the community broadly through every means possible. So returning to the actions requested, that we're requesting of council tonight, so there's the discussion about phase one plans, the immediate traffic calming measures that I just went through, the second phase of the project, a proposed contract with Fair and Peers that would help, that would help us implement any design changes that may come from the discussion tonight, and then, of course, the SEQA exemption, and the existing left turn restrictions, which I haven't spoken a lot about. Those turn restrictions have been installed over the years to improve conditions on Fountain and prevent neighborhood cut-through, and we're currently leaving them in the plans. The Transportation Commission and the Steering Committee was a little bit divided on that. Some felt like removing them would be more of a clean slate for analysis later. So that concludes the presentation. We're, as Nick mentioned, we're joined by a large team that's here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I understand that we have about 36 speakers signed up for public comment on this item. So do we want to go straight there? No one has any clarifying questions to start with? Okay, we'll do that. And I think, because 36 people times two, 72 minutes, I think we'll do our best to keep it at that 90 seconds. That's okay with everyone here? And we will be moving through the public comment list the same way I have before. I'll call a number of names, so be prepared to come up as you're ready to do so. We'll start with Lynn White, followed by Mike Nuttall, followed by John Meeks. Remember, 90 seconds. City clerk, one moment, please, Lynn, before the timer says two. Adjusted it to...
She switches it.
Oh, you did?
She switches it.
Okay, perfect. All you, Lynn, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to address concerns over the Fountain Avenue Streetscape Plan, a plan I strongly oppose for many reasons, beginning with the complete lack of significant input from community members. How do you, in good faith, move forward with a project that had no early notification to or input by the people directly affected? None of us are opposed to safety for all modes of travel, but we must ask, why do the only plans presented reduce vehicle lanes, remove much-needed parking, and add bike lanes? Why were no other options discussed and presented to the neighborhood residents? Surely, there are other ways to slow traffic and create a safer street. With this plan, what happens to emergency vehicles if traffic is gridlocked? When cars can't get around the trash trucks, creating erratic angry actions? When residents see the much-needed parking spots just disappear? Or when gridlock causes car emissions to linger longer in our neighborhoods? Where do delivery trucks, rideshires, service trucks, and friends and family park? Where do the cars go for alternative routes? Santa Monica and Sunset are already at capacity much of the day. Once aware, we as community members have asked these questions over and over again. Some of you have given those of us with dissenting opinions no credibility, calling us, among other things, liars, and equated us to the Trump administration, which I take great personal offense to. If you can't answer these questions with proper solutions, how can you move forward? Who are you serving, if not the residents of this area?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Nuttall, followed by John Meeks. I'm going to pause really quick. We can't do the clapping back and forth every time. We know there are divided opinions in this room, but we're going to move through public We're going to show respect to the people at the microphone, and I appreciate you all. Thank you. Mike Nuttall.
Hi. So I've talked about this before. I've done AIDS lifecycle 12 times. I've ridden my bike 40,000 miles on California roads, and the one thing that I can say is I avoid Fountain at all costs because of how dangerous it is, and I think the current status quo doesn't work. A change is needed, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. John Meeks, followed by Adam Kroll, followed by Michael Selditch.
Good evening. I'm John Meeks. I'm the victim of the hit-and-run that took place on May 5th at the corner of Havenhurst and Fountain. I moved to West Hollywood in '87 from New York. My first apartment was on Hollywood House. I've run bars, nightclubs. I've worked at nonprofits in West Hollywood, Paws L.A. So my whole life has been here since 1987. And I just implore you, like Manhattan, to put red, yellow, green stoplights at every intersection between Fountain and La Brea and Los Yenin. Because, yeah, they're killing people. They don't pay attention to those yellow signs. They do not. This person who hit me, that light was flashing. And they hit me. They swerved into me. So I'm begging you guys, please, I don't know what those plans are, but I'm begging you, I want to live. I want my neighbors to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Kroll, followed by Michael Selditch, followed by Stephanie Harker.
Good evening, council members, and thank you to all the staff for working on this project as well. I think there's some serious issues of equity here that this plan will begin to address. There are a lot of folks in our city who do not own cars, who do get around on foot, who are pedestrians. And even those of us who do drive around, we want to be able to walk down the street without fear of these cars ripping down the street at 60 miles an hour. This street was not designed to be a freeway and that's how it's used. The area north of Santa Monica Boulevard is not as high-income as the area south of Santa Monica Boulevard. And I don't think it's a coincidence that Fountain was widened and turned into a freeway and streets like Willoughby and Romaine and Waring continue to be those residential streets that they should be. They have much less traffic with that 2,000 cars per day versus 34,000 cars per day that Fountain currently sees. And of those 34,000, 22,000 is cut-through traffic. They are not folks who are originating in West Hollywood or going to West Hollywood. They're just simply cutting through. As you all know, there are sidewalks all down Fountain that are tiny, folks with mobility issues, elderly people. God forbid my mother ever walked down that street, you know, as someone who is elderly and has mobility issues. How many parking spaces or how many lives is worth a parking space? How many people have to die before we say, oh, okay, yes, we should remove some parking spaces? Thank you to you all.
Michael Selditch, followed by Stephanie Harker, followed by David Eckert. Excuse me.
Hi, I'm Michael Selditch, a property owner in West Hollywood for 20 years, just off of Fountain. I think this project is dangerous, illogical, and far less safe than we're being told. The core flaw is reducing Fountain from four lanes to two, one of the most congested streets in the city. This is going to trap drivers, fuel frustration, and push them into reckless maneuvers. A bike lane on Fountain makes no sense. Why not finish the bike lane on Santa Monica where there's room for the design? I've been given less than sufficient time tonight to list the many dangers that I have flagged in the past. But here's one example. With only two lanes, cars drive into oncoming traffic to pass a stopped trash truck. Here, this is a West Hollywood street that shows a line of cars doing exactly that. It happens all over West Hollywood. On December 18th, 2023, Councilmember Lauren Meister asked why none of the Design Committee members live on Fountain or nearby streets and why there was only one design. The same questions were raised on September of '24, two years later, still no answers and no additional designs. There should have been multiple design options, including placing the bike lane on alternate streets. Most importantly, there should have been an option keeping Fountain at four lanes while improving safety by correcting the unfinished work from the 1960s. This project is reckless, ill-conceived, and it's going to cause more accidents and deaths than we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Harker, followed by David Eckert, followed by Lynn et cetera.
Good evening, council. Stephanie Harker, City of West Hollywood. I oppose Item E1, the Fountain Avenue Streetscape Project. My concern is the lack of significant community input. The original Steering Committee did not include a single Fountain resident and met four times behind closed doors before the public even knew what was happening. Many key questions have gone unanswered. Why was only one plan ever presented? Why weren't other streets considered for bike lanes or extending the Santa Monica bike lanes for considered? Why was no traffic study done before committing to a $40 million project? The city said 13,000 postcards were mailed for outreach. To what list? Hundreds of residents on Fountain never received them. Only this summer, after years of planning, were citywide notices finally sent and the August 2025 public meeting was crammed into a small room instead of the council chambers where it could have been televised and public comments could have been called in, viewed by those unable to attend, particularly the disabled. In October of 2023, Zoom community was told only 35 to 40 parking spaces would be lost. Now it's 220, although I noticed 210, over 62% of the Fountain with no viable alternatives. We all want safety, but this plan creates new dangers. Cyclists crossing 120 active, and I'll never make four seconds. This could be a streetscape for all, or this could become the city's most expensive blunder in our 42-year history.
Thank you.
Please move forward with a new plan. This is our...
Stephanie, thank you. That's your time.
I'm turning this into the, I give it to the clerk for you to view.
Yes.
This is a...
Stephanie, that's your time. Thank you so much. David Eckert is next, followed by Lynn et cetera. I'm going to just remind the crowd one more time. We have a number of public commenters. Please stick to your 90 seconds out of respect for each other. Thank you so much. If you have comments that you do not feel like you have time to give, you can enter them to the public comment by sending an email. David Eckert.
Hi, David Eckert, resident of West Hollywood. I live directly on Fountain, near Havenhurst. Listen, I'm happy that bike lanes have been worked into the system, but losing everything else that I as a resident should be included in on a steering committee and have a voice at the table, I was not. I'm furious about it. I talked to Chris, the last postcard thing before August, I never received a single postcard. I was, said, oh, well, I'm sure it just got lost in the mail. I called again, four days in a row, nothing came in the mail. I am furious that a steering committee, and I would love to know why the city did not include a single member from Fountain on that steering committee. It is unfair to the public. I think the public needs to know sidewalks are Phase Two. If this street is so important for Streets For All, then that should be number one importance. I'm sick and tired of ADA and every other compliance pushed to the background for a certain group of bicyclists to get power over the rest of the city. Stop the game. And I'd like Lauren to answer why the Steering Committee did not have one single person on that committee. This is outrageous that this is happening.
Comments need to be addressed to the council. Thank you. Lynn et cetera, followed by Jeremy Benjamin, followed by Michael Greenfield.
Lynn et cetera, West Hollywood. The world has changed. There are now every type of motorized bikes, scooters, skateboards, one-wheel, and gizmos in all shapes and sizes. I've seen eight-year-olds to lots of pre-teens to teens who have commandeered the most common of, a lot of times with two on. We as caring humans need to change to navigate this new reality to protect kids, moms on bikes with their children right behind them, and all others. It's interesting, this period of decision and the coincidences that have happened. Friday, a young man was on a fat squat looking like something from a go-kart motorcycle. It was this high. He was going east on sidewalk and pulled in front of my pickup just as I stopped in the driveway, like always, before the sidewalk. He gave me this big-eyed look like this as he scooted by. You know, his height wasn't the total of the front of my small Toyota pickup. This section of Fountain belongs to all of the residents of West Hollywood. Whose street? The Gentles People's Street. Whose street? The Gentle People's Street. Whose street? The Gentle People's Streets. Whose streets?
Thank you. Jeremy Benjamin, followed by Michael Greenfield, followed by John Hayes.
Hi. I was hit by a car this year on Fountain Avenue. Broke my shoulder and it was a hit-and-run and I reported it to the West Hollywood Sheriff. I asked them several times for help. They did nothing to investigate it. They did nothing to look at security. I got no help for my injury. And then I learned that one week after mine, someone got killed. Another cyclist got, I was on my bike, I forget to mention that, another cyclist got killed in almost the same spot that I was. And I've learned this is notorious. This has been happening for a long time. That's not okay. We need bike lanes. We just need bike lanes, period. They save lives. Please give us bike lanes. It saves lives. And it is a proven fact, it's historically proven in other cities, that when bike infrastructure is taken seriously, it helps with traffic because when people feel safe to bike, a lot more people get on bikes. It helps traffic. Everybody wins. So please, give us bike lanes. Everybody wins. Thanks.
Thank you. Michael Greenfield, followed by John Hayes, followed by Peter Spear.
I have a question. When is the vote? When is this decided?
Michael, please address us through the public comment in the microphone.
I would like to ask a question before I start.
We can't address your comments.
When do we vote?
We can't address your comments.
You can't ask when we're going to vote for this? Why?
The discussion's taking place tonight. This is your time to speak and address the council.
I knew that'd be the answer. Chris is good. He should be working at Disney. Everybody in this room that's against this knows exactly what the problem is. And we're encouraging, the one lane is going to be a disaster. We don't have to go through it. It's already gone through. How much money are you going to make in contracts with the construction companies? How much back ticket? All I can say, I've said what I want to say before and I'm not going to even take that long. I only tell you this is bullshit and he knows it. This guy's watching, working at Disney with the drawings. You're going to ruin our area. I guess you're all for it. That's really sad. Because you're going to destroy the area and you're going to destroy on Sunset Boulevard and all the way down to Melrose. I don't need to say anymore. People have already said what's done. You won't even answer when they're going to vote. Well, you know, you're taking your time. Really? I don't need to take any time. This is the biggest bullshit. I've lived in 46, 46 years on Fountain on the street. So don't tell me with this all, this bullshit you guys are running at Fountain. This guy's the biggest fraud of them all. I'd like to know about the contracts, the contractors. That's what we'd like to know. What money are they getting from all you guys? I don't need to speak to you more.
John Hayes. John Hayes, followed by Peter Spear, followed by Kevin Burton.
Well, I have a car, but I also have two bicycles. I have, I tend to favor bikes because there's not enough of them happening in the city and in this country in general, but certainly here. So whatever we can do to help bicyclists, I think is a good thing overall. A lot of people say they're scared and I understand that. But it would be a lot safer and they'd be less scared if we do some of these things we're trying to do here. And I also wonder, where do people who are so worried about their parking spaces, what do they do when there's street sweeping happening, like twice a week, I assume, on Fountain? Where do they park their cars then? Do some of them have driveways? If not, if they do, why aren't they parking there? Do they have SUVs that don't fit? Are they using their garages for like, to keep stuff piled in there? These are just questions I have. I don't know what the answers are to those, but I assume there's more places people can park their cars than we are given to believe. And people who are retired, well, I'm retired. I don't need to worry about getting to work. So that wouldn't be an issue for me. And let's see, emergencies, yeah. I live on a side street. It's just a regular street, but there's one way. If a garbage truck comes by there or an emergency vehicle comes there, it takes up the whole street. Somehow we survive. I don't know why they can't do it on Fountain. That's all I have to say for now.
Thank you. Peter Spear. Apologies if I'm saying that wrong. Kevin Burton and then Robert Erickson.
Hi, hi, thank you. Fountain Avenue, we all know, is the most dangerous street in West Hollywood. But it doesn't have to be. You know, just east of La Brea in Los Angeles, Fountain has one lane in each direction, wider sidewalks, trees, even a bike lane. That stretch sees three times fewer severe and fatal crashes than our stretch. The movement, the moment Fountain crosses into West Hollywood, it opens to two lanes, drivers hit the gas, and the street turns into a speedway. Since 2013, there have been five deaths, 35 severe injuries, and 40 people whose lives have ended or forever altered. You know, we inherited this dangerous design from the 60s, but we're allowed it to remain for decades. And now we have the chance to finally change it. Fountain Avenue is so dangerous that fixing it could be the most important and impactful lifesaving project you work on in your careers. Let's not wait any longer. Please vote yes to expedite Phase One and authorize proposal for Phase Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Burton, followed by Robert Erickson, followed by Annette Kozmerski. Is that microphone working? Is it on? Oh, there it is. Now we can hear it. Yep.
Good evening, council. I'm Kevin Burton. I'm a resident of West Hollywood. I live two doors off Fountain Avenue. I enter every car that goes by, every collision that's in my part of town. I'm with the bicycle coalition. We strongly support this proposal. The bike lanes will be physically separated from traffic. That will protect bicyclists. Also means that drivers won't have to worry so much about bikes sharing the lane with them. But this project is not and never has been only about the safety of bicyclists. It's also about the safety of pedestrians and drivers. As staff reports show, Caltrans' own data shows from cities around the country and around the state, when you reduce a road like Fountain, which is a highway, due to one lanes in each direction, there is a significant reduction in speed and with that, injuries and deaths of pedestrians and bicyclists. These are the facts that are being ignored by many people. And the big problem is that some vehicles go charging down that highway currently like charging bulls. The city needs to take that bull by the horns and charge into a safer Fountain Avenue for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask Kevin a quick question?
I don't know that it's appropriate.
City Attorney, am I allowed to ask a question of somebody who spoke or speaking if I need clarification?
I think that they want to get through all the public commenters. Can you ask him after everyone's had a chance to speak?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, as long as Kevin will stay. Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Erickson. No affiliation with John Erickson. As Betty Davis famously said, take Fountain as faster. There are several people in here, including me and a big group of people that I represent, about the increased congestion, slower emergency response driver frustration, lower, longer commute times hurt local businesses, difficulty in deliveries, worse in air pollution. It's a misfit for LA. We're not Amsterdam. We're not Copenhagen. It's a high cost with low benefits. There's millions of people. The money that should be spent there, I'm just going to stop there. Where's the metro station? I mean, honestly, if there was an alternative to this, I think we're probably five, what, 10 years before, and I would support Fountain. But right now, nobody wants to be in West Hollywood. There are businesses that have gone out. There's no coffee shops. There is, there needs to be like rent stabilization on the commercial properties so that people can come in and open businesses, so that people want to be in West Hollywood. Nobody wants to be in West Hollywood right now. I sell real estate. I can't get people to buy houses here. It's too expensive. But beside all that, we need a metro station. And I think we should need to spend the money on getting the MTA to put its metro station on Santa Monica and San Vicente. And that will relieve the people needing to drive down Fountain. Thank you.
Annette Kozmerski, followed by Xenos Mason, sorry, and Nick Renteria is after that. Hi, Nick.
Good evening. Annette Kozmerski, resident of West Hollywood since 2008. I live in West Hollywood, but all of my jobs have been outside of West Hollywood. And unfortunately, the nature of my work requires that I have a job with me, have a car with me at the job so that I can travel to remote work sites. I have not been able to make use of, I actually prefer public transportation. Don't ride a bike. Not opposed to it, but... prefer public transportation. Don't ride a bike. Not opposed to it, but I would have needed, for some of my 40-mile commute, would have needed to take that bike onto a bus or be able to ride it on a freeway. So I have never, out of impracticality and complete impossibility, been able to ride a bike to any of my jobs. So therefore, I drive cars. I am afraid that the reduction in traffic lanes on Fountain will increase road rage and increase traffic accidents, both because the cars will swerve into lanes to try to get around the gridlock. And I am concerned about that, and the diversion to side streets, which I have witnessed when I've seen it happen in Santa Monica. Further, I am concerned that nothing is being done to enforce the traffic rules that we already have before we embark on this crazy project. We do not enforce speed limits. We do not enforce rules of the road for bike riders at all right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Xenos Mason, followed by Nick Renteria, followed by Joseph Meisner.
Good evening, everyone. I've been a resident for six years, very short compared to others in this room, but long enough to know that changes to Fountain are a red-hot political issue in the city and have been for decades. And at the same time, my first two years here, commuted to work every day, multiple miles. And now I, until a couple weeks ago, biked every day in the city. On balance, after reading the many studies and documents published by the city, I support the project. I'm excited by safer biking. I'm excited by safer walking and reduction in through traffic. I think this plan focuses on quality of life for WeHo residents. But I think we should all be crystal clear that this is going to be bad for hundreds of residents on Fountain Avenue. Every plan, every policy has winners and losers, and everyone in this room knows that compromise is necessary. The deeper problem, I think, is a broken relationship between city management, council, and residents. That means that compromises are circumvented by the city. And again and again, when it comes to adopting local input, council decision-making has come up short. Case in point, Weaver's Walk, and undemocratic acquiescence to Ben Soleimani. Case in point, the failure of the city to stand up to the builders' remedy projects. And with this project, a first public meeting a month before this vote, that's a failure. I'm glad some of you trust your planners enough to pre-signal your support, but it would be healthier for our civvery city if you listened first, gave adequate time for change, decided after. Making backroom decisions might be okay for Sacramento. Some of you might be headed, but it's not okay for us. So yeah, I hope the bike lanes go in, and I hope you give it time.
Nick Renteria, followed by Joseph Meisner, followed by Carlos Flores.
Good evening, Mayor Byers and West Hollywood City Council. My name is Nick Renteria. I'm a biker here in West Hollywood, and I have been hit by a car before. After I was hit by a car, I had to go to physical therapy for my shoulder and my leg, and that physical therapy was on the east side of West Hollywood. The only route I was able to take was Fountain Boulevard. So imagine being hit by a car in Santa Monica and then having to bike on Fountain to go to physical therapy. It was terrifying. I know firsthand what it is like to bike on that road. It is not safe, and it's supposed to be a bike path. So let's make it one. And I'm also here on behalf of West Hollywood For All, which is our local chapter of Abundant Housing LA. And although we are an abundant housing chapter, we also acknowledge that livability is a key tenet of any community, any city. And I presented earlier today via email to all of you a petition to install bike counters before the redesign. The idea with this is to track and display how many people are biking on the road now, and then after the redesign is completed, how many people are biking on it then. A lot of what we've heard today is how divisive this issue has become in our community, and I think part of also what we heard is that the data is not being communicated. So let's install this now, communicate the data, and show how much of a difference it makes when the bike lanes are there. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Meisner, followed by Carlos Flores, followed by Shulam Steisel. And please correct your name in the microphone if I'm doing an awful job. Thank you.
That's what works.
That's right.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Joseph Meisner. I've lived on Fountain Avenue in West Hollywood for seven years. I do most of my daily, or almost daily, travel on foot. And I would bike more, but Fountain Avenue terrifies me. So if it were safer to bike, that would probably cut more than half of the trips by car that I make in the course of a week. So I support the project, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Carlos Flores, followed by Shulam Steisel, followed by Slade Lynn.
Hello. Been a resident of this city for 25 years. I lived on Formosa, and I work here right across the street. And I chose to bike, and the only alternative bike lane that I had was not Fountain, because I'm not a fearless biker, or Santa Monica. I would go all the way down to Willoughby. But even Willoughby, drivers would try to push me off the road on a bike. That's not acceptable. So we need protected bike lanes. Let's start with Fountain and have a great road. What I really want to emphasize is I'm an architect, and I know a lot of stuff takes time to design properly. Please look at all the details. This is our opportunity to do it right. We have to do it right, because we, once it's built, we cannot go back and redo it. Like this building or the rec center, we have to do it right. I know something's going to get done, but we have to do it right. My personal opinion, instead of just having two lanes, like one for each way, we have a centered turning lane that would help for emergency vehicles to go through, that would help to turn left onto residential buildings, that would help to turn left on intersections, and perhaps even have some planting in the middle. I know something's going to get done, but I support this truly, because just three months ago, Blake Akerson got killed on Gardner, who's a 22-year-old bicyclist. Thank you.
Thank you. Shulam Steisel, followed by Slade Lynn, followed by Rafael Landa.
Greetings. As the owner and operator of a motor vehicle, a Toyota Corolla, to be precise, I fully support this streetscape proposal. Because every time I get in my car and drive on Fountain Avenue, there's some entitled cyclist that slows me down. They barely go 12 miles an hour, and I've got to sit there seething, trying to find an opportunity when I can get around them. And then when I finally do, I got to speed up, and they're just so entitled, taking up space, causing even more traffic. They need their own space. Give them their bike lanes. Let them have it so that I can be on my way. Now, on the flip side, I also am an entitled cyclist. I cycle to work three days a week, five and a half miles downtown in LA, and I tell you, there are plenty of entitled drivers who drive up my butt. They honk at me. They yell at me. They close past me. They brake-check me. They tell me, get out of the way, and I can't, because there's no bike lane. So if West Hollywood passes this proposal, it's going to be a win-win for drivers and cyclists, and we can all get on our way, and we can all arrive home safely.
Thank you. Slade Lynn, followed by Rafael Landa, followed by Ida.
38-year resident.
You can pull the mic. Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
Slade Lynn, 38-year resident. I ride my bike in the city around four times a week. I rarely see anybody else riding bikes. I will never ride on Fountain. Never. It's too dangerous. Cautionary tales here. Culver City, 2023. City Council voted to modify their Move Culver City project, removed a protected bike lane, and added back a removed car lane. Reason was to address congestion by adding the car lane. San Mateo, 2025. City Council unanimously voted to remove bike lanes on Humboldt Street, the longest street. The goal, restore over 100 parking spots. Glendale, December 2024. City Council voted to remove a parking-protected bike lane on Brand Boulevard, and that was the only apparent parking-protected bike lane, and the decision was made, decide staff recommending to modify it. And basically, the demonstration project was removed by council vote. So, very, very interesting. I was at that meeting at Plummer Park. I noted a lot of young, younger people, talked about kids and wanting to have safe places for their kids to ride bikes in neighborhoods. My suggestion to them is to move to the suburbs. That's what my family did. And we could ride our bikes in complete safety, living out in Northridge. And yeah, my dad had to commute back to the city. But that's what you do when you have kids. You sacrifice.
Rafael Landa.
Good evening, city council members. I live on Fountain, and I, my main concern is the parking. I have a tenant, and he parks in the street, actually, him and her. They park in the street on Fountain. Point Setti and Fuller, between Point Setti and one of the streets. So that would be my main concern. As to the accidents, runners, skateboarders, bicycle drivers can have accidents, crashing against residents that are going to, that live there. So, but that's my main concern. It sounds like it's beautiful, that perhaps there's going to be less noise, but that is my main concern, the parking.
Thank you. Ida, followed by Ted Sroka, followed by Ivana Adrade.
Hi, my name's Ida Sherry, and I want to say I'm angry being here. I'm angry taking the time to be here to say that my life matters. We have no town halls or meetings when Metro expands roads or Caltrans expands freeways. We have no town halls or meetings when the city destroys neighborhoods for a stadium or a freeway. But whenever there's a plan that improves the lives of people who are marginalized, who are not privileged, cities have many meetings and town halls to avoid lawsuits and water down the plans that would help the most people. Metro is doing this right now. Our communities have not been improved in decades while other cities are prioritizing health and safety. New York City, Chicago, San Francisco are all adding bike lanes and closing roads of traffic that increase safety and improve air quality. This project is just sheer science. When you expand streets, it will result in more people using them. Wider streets result in speeding. This is sheer science. This is why people drive slower on narrow windy roads. This is by design. It has nothing to do with personal choice. Lung cancer affects everyone of all ages, and this project could help reduce air pollution and make sure that our kids are healthy and alive, as cars are the number one killer of kids in LA. The city has a legal right to make our streets safer, per the case of Whitehead. Not everyone owns a car or has the ability to drive. We should always be improving our communities, and this is an improvement, and I hope the council will do what's right and improve this plan. Thank you.
Ted Sroka, followed by Ivana Adrade, followed by Steve Landry.
Hello, good council. My name is Ted Sroka. I've been a resident for almost 30 years now. And for several years, I worked in an office on Fountain and Gower, and I biked to work. Did I take Fountain? No way. I took Willoughby, because it was the far safer choice, and it is a great option for bike lanes. According to the UC Berkeley Transportation Injury Mapping System, over the last 12 years, there have been 2,713 crashes in West Hollywood. Of those crashes, 8.5% involve people on bicycles. Now, we all want safer streets, but this plan is prioritizing a group that is statistically the least impacted, while marginalizing and creating new risks for the community as a whole. Reducing Fountain to one lane each way is going to slow emergency vehicles. That could mean the difference between life and death. It could impact our ability to evacuate the next time there's a fire, and there probably will be one at some point in the next year. One of the things I love about West Hollywood is my ability to walk everywhere, and I have noticed, as a pedestrian, I have been increasingly endangered by people on e-bikes and scooters, even when we already have bike lanes. We all want a safer Fountain, but I feel this plan does not fit our community, and I urge this committee to reevaluate and refine this plan and work with residents to find an alternative that works for everyone. Wow, I made it under 90 seconds. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ivana Adrade, followed by Steve Landry, followed by Ed Holman.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much. My name's Ivana Andrade. I've been a resident here for the last four years. A few things about this project stand out to me. At a previous commission meeting, one commissioner pointed out, previous speaker spoke to this as well, that this kind of infrastructure is a proven way to improve safety for everyone, not just bicyclists, but automobile drivers as well. To me, this is an important piece of a truly walkable city, as previous folks have mentioned, that will become increasingly valuable through time as surrounding areas make deeper investments in pedestrian infrastructure through time. As anyone knows, the timeline of public infrastructure like this, these kinds of things take decades of consistent investment, so this project makes more sense now than it does in the future. It brings more benefits early to more people. Furthermore, I'm a local government climate policy practitioner. I lead development and implementation of climate policy statewide. And I can tell you that these kinds of investments are tough, but they make some of the biggest impacts on greenhouse gas reductions that a local government can make. And West Hollywood is at the leading edge of greenhouse gas emissions reduction, especially in its building policies. The future isn't gas-powered, and this project helps us get there as well. Finally, advanced and progressive cities do this kind of work all the time, and they don't look back. These are the kinds of things that just bring more and more value to the community through time. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Landry, followed by Ed Holman, and then Jordan Beard. Is Steve no longer here? Okay, Ed Holman is up. Thanks, Ed.
Excuse me. Good evening, council members. I was watching a football game, but this is really important. My team won, but I'm here. I too have a Toyota Corolla, but that's neither here nor there. I've spoken to a lot of the residents on the street where I live on Flores, and a lot of them are against this project, as I am as well. Why aren't you listening to the louder voices? At an earlier city council meeting, you got caught stacking the advisory group with cyclists who gave the report that you wanted. We haven't forgotten that. Here's a list of cities that have installed bike lanes and since, have since removed them or altered them. Philadelphia, Portland, Oregon, Vista, California, San Mateo, Culver City, Los Angeles, Beverly Hills. Some of the reasons listed? Community pushback, traffic congestion, loss of parking, change of leadership. I know some of you want to leave a mark on the city before you move on to your next political venture, but why does this unwanted project have to be it? You still haven't addressed where the affected citizens who are going to lose parking along Fountain are going to park. You still have an opportunity to exit this plan and listen to the residents. Thank you.
Jordan Beard, followed by Flint Smith, followed by Jesse Harris.
Good evening, council. I've been, I've lost count of the amount of times that I've stood here and addressed the danger posed by Fountain Avenue. Council has already voted four times to support this project since 2021. Three of those votes were unanimous. It should not take four, five, or six votes to build a bike lane in a city of 35,000 people. Fountain Avenue even became the central issue in last year's election. But the election results were clear. Supporters of this project won both open seats handily. The people have spoken, and the vocal minority here should respect the mandate in the name of democracy. To naysayers wanting to keep Fountain unchanged, I say, look at Fountain east of La Brea. The street there is one lane in each direction. The homes are not burning down. The trash is not piling up. It's a residential street far safer than Fountain Avenue in West Hollywood. Regarding enforcement, WeHo sheriffs already give out more tickets on Fountain Avenue for speeding than all other streets in the city combined. But yet, the street is still dangerous. Wild. It's embarrassing that even after this vote passes tonight, that the council will have to vote yet again on this project next year to award the construction contract. A sixth vote, however elusive. A progressive city, a progressive city should embrace change. It should not turn something as simple as building a bike lane into an almost decade-long endeavor. Every delay puts more lives in danger.
Thank you. Flint Smith, followed by Jesse Harris, followed by Humira Afzal? Sorry.
I'm just here to say that West Hollywood traffic cannot be trusted. They have lots of maps and words, but look at their actual successes or failures. Look at Melrose, trying to cross Los Yenega, backed up to San Vicente. Cars are pushed off. They go into the neighborhoods. They could remove three parking spaces up by Los Yenega and get twice as many cars through there at every cycle, but they don't. Why don't they? I doubt their motives. They lie. When they start, they'll just toss the plans and do whatever they want. They, at my house, they, there was a manhole, and they, instead of putting the traffic calming there, they put it over there and instantly changed two lost spaces into four lost spaces, parking spaces. And there was no... And there was no paperwork or anything, they just did it. If you want to judge their skills on your own, look at the roadmap where San Vicente crosses Los Yenega. Look at the lanes, and then look at the signage, and you'll see that four lanes, three lanes on the sign changes into four lanes going across. On the other side, it's three. If you look at the road and yourself, draw a map of what the signs should say, and then look what the signs do say. You'll see they're incompetent.
Jesse Harris, followed by Humira Afzal, and then Aziza Afzal. Apologies.
Hello, council. Jesse Harris. In the early 20th century, when a kid was killed from being hit by a car, mothers would gather, blocking the roadways, expressing their condolences, and demanding the street safety improvements. It was those mothers who started some of the fledgling safe streets organizations, along with bike riders who had trouble navigating unregulated streets. Those early activists were responsible for a lot of the safety improvements we take for granted today, like stop signs, stoplights at intersections, signs warning of children playing, and lowered speed limits in areas surrounding schools. Our collective preferred narrative is that traffic violence is at best unfortunate and unavoidable and doesn't quite rise to the level of a tragedy requiring, deserving of a public expression of grief, much less policy and infrastructure reforms. On June 6, 2013, it was me who was a victim of traffic violence. Luckily, I did not die. On September 16, 2016, it was Dwayne Merity crossing Highland Avenue on his way back to the youth shelter where I worked with him. He died, I cried. On July 10, 2025, it was Blake Ackerman on Fountain Avenue. More people die on our nation's roadways from traffic violence annually than die of breast cancer. Since 2013, 40 people have died or been severely injured on one short street segment in our neighborhood, a segment on a street where 95% of the structures are residential. Two of the ones that aren't are churches. One thing I noticed about the plan is that it budgeted some space for everyone. There's a space for cars to park, pedestrians to walk, and for cyclists to bike. That's what it looks like to share a public space, and I'm proud to live in a city that goes beyond thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Humira.
Hi, I moved to California less than a month ago. I've already been hit by a car. I was also hit in the last state that I lived in. I don't really remember what exactly happened this last time, but I am very sure that it would not have happened with better bike and pedestrian infrastructure. It wouldn't have happened without roads designed for cars and not for other road users. There's a simple fact: the only way to reduce traffic congestion and make it easier to find parking is to get cars off the road. You do that by giving people other safe and viable and cheaper alternatives to getting around. The Fountain Avenue project is one of those alternatives. A lot of people haven't mentioned the fact that it's also very expensive to own and operate a car. Building better bike and pedestrian infrastructure like this can make it possible for people to be car-free or to be a single-car household. The money saved can be spent on other things, like paying the rent, paying for health insurance, or shopping at local businesses. Inaction or more delays on this project will mean more people, pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers, dying or being seriously injured on Fountain, most of those preventable, more time wasted sitting in traffic because of the lack of other safe and viable ways for people to get around, and more money wasted on car maintenance and ownership because it's not practical to be a car-free or single-car household.
Thank you. Aziza, followed by Alec White, followed by Steve B.
Hi, I live at the corner of Fountain Ave. and Gardner Street, and I fully support this item. I walk and scooter everywhere I can. However, this means I have to cross Fountain Ave., which makes me super uncomfortable no matter what time of day it is. I've tried scootering on Fountain Ave., where technically you're supposed to bike or scooter as it's a shared road, and it was so scary because of how fast the cars were going, and I kept getting honked at, which is not surprising considering it's literally not designed for anything but cars. I also take the bus to get to the Hollywood Highland Metro Station to get to my office downtown, and a bike lane on Fountain Ave. would make it way easier to just scooter down Fountain to the metro station, making public transit more accessible, too. I also have to walk by the memorial for Blake Ackerman every single day, and I cannot fathom why anyone would be okay with maintaining the current infrastructure that would allow for anything so horrible and preventable to happen again. We should be doing everything that we can to make it safer and more accessible to all the residents of WeHo who don't use cars as their main method of transportation, and Item E1 would be doing just that. So please invest and move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alec White, followed by Steve B., followed by Lisa Liberati.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. 10 years ago, I took an oath to protect my Trojan family and community when I was sworn into an elected position in USC student government. A couple years later, someone else took the same oath. I've always wanted to ask how that person felt in that moment, but I won't be able to because that person was Blake Ackerman. When I went into his vigil and walked on Fountain to get there, these narrow sidewalks made me feel unsafe as cars sped by at 50 miles an hour. And I was hearing that Fountain makes up one of 25 road miles in West Hollywood, but accounts for over 1 in 3 fatal accidents, and I saw the staff report how Fountain east of La Brea is dramatically safer than Fountain west of La Brea, where there's one lane, and the fire and police even said the project wouldn't impact their abilities. Think about that. We need safety, we need protected bike lanes so people like Blake can walk and bike without fear. One close friend who even knew him very well through USC Hillel told me directly to speak up for him. I'm here to do that. And I hear a lot of questions about how this project impacts our neighborhood character. What makes our and West Hollywood neighborhood character strong is looking out for each other. We can make a few adjustments to save someone's life. It may have been 10 years ago when I took an oath to protect my Trojan community members like Blake, but it still rings true for my WeHo community where I've lived for almost a decade. Let's approve these bike lanes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Steve B., followed by Lisa Liberati, followed by Marvin Greenhouse.
Steve B., West Hollywood. I was here in 2023 when this was introduced, and I remember Lauren Meister was the only one that had reservations about this, because it makes more sense on Santa Monica than Fountain. Why? Why Fountain? I mean, Santa Monica, it makes sense. Santa Monica doesn't have apartments, Santa Monica doesn't have real estate. They were taking away the parking spaces of people living in those buildings. So why? You want them out. My think is that this guy, Development Director, is going to swoop in, take the place, make into something else. This just strikes as a land grab, and it's disguised with bike lanes. And no matter what I say to you, you're not going to listen. You've made up your minds. See, I was here in 2023 when this is introduced, on the same docket when you guys voted to tear down a synagogue. You guys don't care. You have your own interest, whether it's a lobby, whether it's BeautifulTrouble.org. You know what you're doing, and it's wrong. And I can't appeal to you, so I'll appeal to God. God, we deserve better leadership. God, we deserve people who care about this community. Only you, Hashem, can bring in people that would actually care about the people that live here. And I applaud Lauren Meister, but you have to stand up and have a stronger voice for us because you're the only one that cares. You're the only one here that cares really, truly about the residents. So thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Liberati, followed by Marvin Greenhouse, followed by Kathy Blavis.
Good evening. Thank you so much for holding this meeting. I moved to West Hollywood in 1989. I currently live just north of Fountain Avenue on Fuller. And indeed, Betty Davis did say, "Take Fountain," but she was smoking a cigarette at the time. And I'd like to point out that while I think she's a style icon and a famous West Hollywood and she's not somebody that we should rely on as an expert for public safety. I'm a motorist who has been rear-ended twice on Fountain Avenue by cars going way too fast. The second one resulted in a major concussion for my husband. And I also ride my bike on Fountain Avenue. I am that fearless soul. And I refuse to stop doing it because it is a bike route. And I think it would be very helpful, we've seen the science, that this kind of traffic calming improves conditions for everybody. It improves conditions for motorists, the neighborhood, pedestrians. And I urge you to support this as a West Hollywood-adjacent resident. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Marvin Greenhouse, followed by Kathy Blavis, followed by Paul Morse.
Hello again. Marvin Greenhouse, West Hollywood. I've had a chance to thoroughly review this plan here, and it didn't take me very long to come to the conclusion that it's a really bad idea for a number of reasons. The main one, of course, is cutting down Fountain from four lanes to two, one lane in each direction, which for sure is going to wind up creating a traffic mess, especially during our morning and afternoon rush hours. And what's going to happen is we're going to find, and I can see it right now, we're going to get a lot of pissed-off and frustrated drivers turning off of Fountain, heading, flying down our residential side streets to get to Santa Monica Boulevard, no matter how bad it is down there, just to get away from Fountain. Now, just like my street on Point Setti, we also have people riding bicycles, we have people riding scooters, we have people walking around, walking their dogs, and so on. What about their safety? I guess you haven't thought about that. So, you know, this looks like a really great plan for like a real small college town, like Mount Berkeley or something like that, but not around here. With the traffic that we have in this city, we need every lane that we have. So please, stop this plan. It's just going to make life a lot more difficult for a lot of folks, and that's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Blavis, followed by Paul Morse, followed by Nathaniel Hyman.
Good evening, Kathy Blavis, City of West Hollywood. We keep hearing that the majority wants this plan, and my question is, upon which study, what survey was it ascertained that this is the will of the majority? Stephanie Harker held up a petition that has 2,634 signatures in opposition. So where are we getting a majority? A point that's been brought up tonight about Fountain east of La Brea, it's all stop signs. Yes, it's two lanes, one in each direction, but it's stop signs. You know where else there's stop signs on every corner? Romaine. Why wasn't Romaine considered for at least part of this? The parking mitigation, really, to go to Crescent Heights or to go to Plummer Park and move your car by 8:00 a.m.? It's, excuse me, totally unrealistic. There's never been any other option presented to the community. Maybe there are other options. This is an example, I've said it before, I'll say it again. You like this plan, don't you? Where is the outreach, the input, the significant input from the community? Again, where are you getting figures that state the majority want this?
Thank you. Paul Morse, followed by Nathaniel Hyman, followed by Leila Conian.
Hi, Paul Morse, longtime West Hollywood resident for about 25 years. I bike twice a week, and I would not take Fountain because anything west of King's Road has dangerously steep slopes going down Santa Monica Boulevard. So I just want to warn people. One time, I tried it, I went to Los Yenega, and as I descended down Los Yenega, I almost lost my brakes and into the traffic and hallway. So that's all, I think this is a dangerous idea, and I'm against it.
Thank you. Nathaniel Hyman, followed by Leila Conian.
Thank you, council. And yeah, they're starting to be dense in the podium. And I apologize to whoever had to read my handwriting. I'm a three-year resident of Point Setti Drive, just off of Fountain. I support the project. I don't ride my bike on Fountain, I'm a motorist, because despite it all, I still want to live. So you heard it all at this point, I just wanted to say that I and many others appreciate the work of the city planning department. This is a thoughtful proposal, and it considered all the factors that folks are accusing them of ignoring. It has involved the public sufficiently and appropriately, not too little and not too much. An enormous amount of time went into this project, and none of us here, giving public comment, myself included, have matched it. I went to school with these planners. It's honest work, it's scientific work, it's hard work. It furthers justice, fosters community, and saves lives. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leila Conian. Hello, excuse me. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having this hearing meeting. I've been here many times, and I've given you so many reasons, but you're not going to listen to real people's reasons. I've been living here for 25 years, and I didn't know about this project until last year when I saw, save our parking spot. I had no idea. You didn't send any postcards or anything to let us know. And you know what? Some people need to travel, need to take Fountain to go to work outside the city. And leave one block south of Fountain, okay? I mean, what you're doing is impossible. I have much bigger fish to fry, but I refuse not to come here because this is going to change many of our lives. This is going to create more problems for us. I say, this has to be on the ballot. Enough is enough. You know what? This is not democratic, okay? Are you democratic? You are not democratic here. You don't believe in democratic values, otherwise you would have put this issue on the ballot and not just come up with something like this.
Thank you. We are going to go to Zoom for the public commenters there. If there's anybody else in chambers who would wish to speak, please get your comments slip in. This is the last moment for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker in Zoom is Alec Friedman. Alec, please press star six, you'll have 90 seconds.
Hi, do you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, council and mayor. I'm Alec Friedman, West Hollywood. I've lived near Fountain Avenue for over 30 years, and I use it daily as a pedestrian, bike rider, and tire driver. And Fountain Ave. is in dire need of improvement. This project is long overdue. I salute this proposal, and I fully support bike lanes, whether protected or unprotected. Fountain Ave. has always been a major corridor for cyclists, so installing bike lanes would be a huge safety improvement, as the cyclists would be separated from vehicle traffic. Thank God. Bike lanes on Fountain would be a win-win situation. Although in the future, the nearby streets like Santa Monica Boulevard on Fountain should also get bike lanes. As you know, Fountain already has only one lane each direction in the city of L.A., so West Hollywood should follow. Having a consistent one-lane pattern will also eliminate the conversion of two lanes into one lane in many segments, which causes confusion and collisions. Thankfully, this will be resolved. Responding to some other speakers, there was more than enough public input and public outreach. This is taking pretty too much time. By the way, look at the city of Santa Monica as an example. Their side streets, including Broadway, Colorado, and others, also used to have two-car lanes each direction, but now it's only one lane, plus bike lanes. And guess what? The world did not end, the city did not collapse, traffic actually became lighter after this change. So if this Fountain Avenue project is approved, our quality of life and safety will dramatically improve. My family and I urge the city council to approve this great project and to move forward without any further delay.
Alec, that's your time. Thank you, Alec.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kyle Brazil. Kyle, you'll have 90 seconds, please press star six.
Great, thank you. Councilmember references to the need to educate the public on this issue demonstrate a lack of understanding that their role is to represent constituents, not to submit their concerns as uneducated. Turnout on this issue is the clearest measure of failure to meaningfully engage and reflect public sentiment. I'd love to see this put to a public vote, and I guarantee turnout would be higher than on council elections. This is disguised as a safety effort despite never considering more effective and less disruptive alternatives that don't create new risks others have cited. Instead, we're prioritizing performative social values that put the convenience of the 1% of cyclists who voluntarily choose Fountain over nearby safer, lower-volume streets, over the other 99% of commuters and the residents that live along this corridor that depend on mobility. You don't need to sacrifice mobility to improve safety. This isn't about safety. It would do nothing for the vast majority of historical fatal and severe injury collisions, and we're not talking at all about Santa Monica Boulevard, which by any measure has two to three times the number of collisions. the number of collisions. I also encourage the city to learn from failed attempts. Look at Venice Boulevard. Speed stayed the same. Bike traffic declined. Collisions were up. Fatalities and severe injury collisions have continued in the years since. References to impact of 4-3 road diets on low-volume streets with continuous center turn lanes are not comparable, and people conveniently ignore the associated guidance against these solutions on streets with the volume and intersection and driveway frequency like Fountain. I could go on, but you've given us insufficient comment time because we know you don't give a damn. You can push this, but like Culver City and Playa del Rey, we can overcome this failed path walked elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alec Leach. Please press star six to unmute.
Hi, thanks so much. I was just calling in support. I both bike and drive in West Hollywood. And I think, as a driver, the traffic is just horrific. And I only see nothing worse. That is, West Hollywood becomes more and more dense. I don't see a way for traffic in this part of Los Angeles to get better without embracing other modes of transportation such as bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker on Zoom is Lori Barish.
This is Lori Barish. Can you hear me?
Yes.
To still speak to former councilmember Mike Baumann and ask him how the Culver Lane Diet worked out for him. It was a disaster and had to be reversed and put back to the way it was simply because it didn't work. The plan is awful. There will be long delays as well as backups for motorists causing a domino effect on other streets. The few cyclists, one or two within hours that you might see, will have nowhere to go once they leave Fountain because there are no connecting bike lanes, for example, on Los Cienega, which makes zero sense. All this to satisfy a few bikes as compared to the necessity of 35,000 commuters. Moving lanes will be detrimental for emergency vehicles. With no disrespect to drivers here in L.A., if they can't figure out how to navigate emergency vehicles with multi-lanes, how are they going to get down to two? It's not safe. Well, what about pollution from stop-and-start driving in traffic? This is a proven health hazard. Are you thinking about cyclists then? But what about when cyclists, scooters, et cetera, go through stop signs in lights when cars are turning into streets or going straight? There's still going to be accidents. Why, if you're compelled to do the plan, why not even just have one bike lane with bikes going in two directions? This is a city of suburbs, and too spread out to imagine people will dump their cars and hop on bikes. And not everybody is 20 years old and in great shape or has a job you can cycle to. What about seniors or the disabled? But to be told on the phone from you, Erickson, that I don't know enough about what happens on Fountain because I don't live on Fountain and you do is absolutely breathtaking.
Thank you, that's your time.
You wouldn't agree to my observation because I live between Sunset and Fountain.
Thank you. Kevin, is that the Zoom speaker list completed? Okay, I think we have one more person in chambers, Kevin Berry. I think this is the last call for public comment. Kevin?
Thank you, Council. I was sitting back here, listening to what everyone was saying, trying to decide where, where I stood on this. And I saw the man in what I think was a Chiefs jersey speak, talking about Philadelphia, which, as many of you knows, my hometown. And it really got me thinking. For me, I think Fountain should, we all can agree, I think, that Fountain should not remain a dangerous cut-through, cut-through street. It deserves to become a complete street that prioritizes safety and community. Protected bike lanes are a proven way to do this by common traffic reducing collisions and invite more people to move safely through it, whether by bike, scooter, or on foot. We look, when looking at cities like Philadelphia, which invested steadily in protected bike networks along corridors like Market Street and Washington Avenue, if cities like that, that not only made the city more bikeable but improved pedestrian safety can do it and are more dense, why can't West Hollywood do through some, through a street, streetscape project like this? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our citizen position slips, and then I'll call Kevin Burton back up so Councilmember Meister is able to ask your question.
Thank you, Mayor. We have citizen position slips in support of the recommendation for item E1 from Ryan Hanley and Kenneth Champion. And we also have citizen position slips in opposition from Chris Isaacson, Michael Smith, Susannah Miller, Mikey Friedman, and Robert Erickson. But Mr. Erickson, I believe, spoke under public comment.
I believe that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister, did you still want to ask the question to Kevin Burton now?
Yeah, I do. Since Kevin is the expert bicyclist. I have a question about Fountain east of La Brea. Is there a bike lane on Fountain east of La Brea?
There's in one short segment, but that is in East Hollywood.
Okay, is it a protected bike lane?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank all members of the public for coming out and speaking. And I know that the comment has extended beyond the room tonight as far as this project's related, so I really appreciate the engagement here. We are going to come back to councilmember questions, I believe, first, and then we'll get into some discussion. And I will see who'd like to go first on this, Council. Do you have questions? Okay. Questions? Councilmember Erickson, you can begin with some questions.
Thank you so much. In 2017, the City Council adopted the Pedestrian and Bicycle Mobility Plan. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Council.
And can you talk to me about the community input that went into that?
I was not here for that personally, but I'm going to see if anyone from our staff can speak. I don't know if that's Chris or, I'm looking at our larger team here to be able to respond to that.
Unfortunately, neither of us, David nor myself, were here at that time.
Wasn't Helen or Steve here? I know Jackie was here.
I can speak, however, to generally public input for bicycle and pedestrian mobility plans, having worked on others, but not for that specific project.
Great. Well, I do know there were multiple community. Actually, Kevin, weren't you here for the bicycle mobility plan in 2017? Come on up. I'll ask you some questions, since we get to do that now, apparently. Kevin, can you recall to the best of your ability what the community input was back in 2017 for that plan?
For the whole of the plan.
Well, to the best of your ability, can you talk about the different types of engagement processes that the city engaged in?
There were a lot, there were a lot of public meetings for that plan, absolutely. And it makes a number of recommendations for streets around the city. And community meetings, commission meetings, city council discussion, absolutely.
Wonderful. And I am reading your letter, though, but just to confirm, one of the pieces of that plan was to include protected bike lanes, facilitate bike lanes?
Yes. At the time, it was a proposal. It was not approved by Council. So it's not in the current plan.
The Council chose the share rows option, correct?
The share rows were already in place at that time.
And are there share rows east of La Brea in various spots?
I missed, that's, repeat, please.
Are there share rows east of La Brea?
Yes.
Thank you. So what we have on Fountain is there and there. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. You can sit on down now, unless anyone else has questions for you later. When was the first vote on Fountain Avenue?
Chris, do you want to pull up the slide with the project history?
So in March 2021, staff was directed by Council to complete a protected bikeway feasibility study.
And what was the vote count of that item?
All of the votes above on the screen were unanimous with the exception of the receival of the CARB grant last September.
Great. So everyone up, and included in all those votes, minus the CARB grant, of course, did include a protected bike lane on Fountain?
Correct.
Thank you. I'm talking at the moment. Specifically, on those items, did, in between the council votes, did they go to commission meetings and advisory boards as well?
I'm, I would need to double-check with my colleague.
That's fine. You can answer that later. Those are my questions at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister, did you want to go next?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to, just to clarify the record, the vote for the streetscape plan did not guarantee a bike lane. Actually, I proposed the streetscape plan because I could not support the bike lane pilot. And the Council voted for the streetscape project so we could look at Fountain holistic. So why are you lying? Okay, that's my, that's my question. My question's for staff. Does, so I, as I already asked the question to Kevin about Fountain east of La Brea does not have a protected bike lane, and yet it is safer, according to the report. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Did you study a single two-way bike lane on one side of the street only when you were studying the options for a bike lane?
No, the only options that were studied for Phase 1 specifically are options that could safely occur without adjusting traffic signals.
Okay, and so why could you not consider a single two-way bike lane on one side of the street?
To safely create a two-way cycle track like that, you would need to have bicycle signal heads with separated, with separated phasing for cyclists. And that would be more of a larger-scale undertaking.
Okay. Where is the trash truck sitting while it's picking up the trash?
That is, that's very complex because there are.
I think we can.
We have, we have, I'm sorry, do you want me to? Okay. So, so the reason I say it's complex is because there are several different routes. There's routes for organics, recycling, for solid waste, or for general waste, rather. And they operate on different days. And Athens, we have two representatives here that can speak to operational questions, but they have scout vehicles for certain types of bins. Those are pickup trucks that you see on Fountain. So it depends. There's not a single answer. But the Athens representatives are here.
Come on up.
Okay. I'd like to invite Ruben Valenzuela and Jennifer Masterson.
Yeah, that's right. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to let Ruben speak to the operations on Fountain as he is the expert in this area. But could you ask what your specific question was again?
Yeah, where exactly will the trash trucks be positioned? Will they be in a traffic lane? Or will they be over in a, you know, on the side where they're not interrupting traffic when they stop?
They'll be collecting all services or commodities in the lane.
Will they be picking up in the traffic lane? In other words, is that where they're going to be stopping?
Correct.
So they will be stopping traffic while they're picking up?
Yes.
Cars? Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you. Easy peasy. All right. There are 120 active driveways on Fountain. Is that considered a lot of interruption for a protected bike lane?
There's. Chris, there's something that we want to, we also have Darren Pierce here, who is our consultant for the design.
I'd like to ask Natalie Chiba to come up. She's been the project manager.
Sure, that would be great.
They certainly have a lot of experience with these types of projects. So, and if Natalie wants to speak.
So Natalie, is a protected, typical protected bike lane have a lot of interruption, interruptions, meaning like driveways, things like that?
In an urban area, yes.
Okay. And is 120 active driveways on Fountain, is that considered a lot of interruption for a protected bike lane?
There are no thresholds for what is a lot or a little. It is very just case by case.
And, well, I guess I would ask, what protections does a bike have coming down their bike lane when someone's pulling out of their driveway and they don't see them?
Yeah, and I will just say, you know, there is both intersection and driveway protection in our design, improving bike lane, or bike and pedestrian safety at the intersection. And at driveways involves really slowing turning vehicles, just like it does in the sidewalk. Our design incorporates first tightening the curb radii so that people have to take turns at slower speeds, two, adding slow turn wedges so that larger vehicles are also required to slow down when making turns, and three, reducing the number of lanes drivers have to navigate when making left turns, which increases their ability to focus on the crosswalk and bikeway.
Okay, and I'm focused on driveways right now, so?
Those all apply to driveways.
That applies to driveways. And what do you do to slow down bikes to beware of driveways? I mean, to make them aware, there's a driveway.
Similar to pedestrians walking in the sidewalk, bikes have the right-of-way in the dri, in the bikeway.
Okay. All right, thank you. Helen, is John here? Hi, John. Thanks for being here. So for me, a, a bike lane does not necessarily, okay, in order to make a street safer, and we all want to make Fountain safer, it's not necessarily a bike lane that's going to make it safer. So I guess what I would just ask you is, from a city engineering perspective, what are some other ideas to calm traffic on Fountain other than, or my colleagues might say in addition to, a bike lane?
Yes, the, the vehicle traffic[1595.38]
Yes, the vehicle traffic is going to use the capacity that's there. So when a road is larger, when it has more opportunity to drive, you'll see faster traffic, you'll see more traffic as far as volume and speeds. So streets that are smaller, that are serving local network, like residential street that's unstriped, it's narrow, those are going to be less traffic, less volume of cars, less speed. So Fountain is a collector because it's serving 30,000 cars a day. So it was widened by the county to facilitate that mobility of vehicles. So it is a juggle between different modes of transportation. So these types of projects are hard to say it's good or it's bad, right? There are a mix of competing interests or competing use of very limited space. So if the ideas are focusing on which elements is where you're going to get the results or the answers from. So trying to slow vehicles down, trying to reduce the amount of maneuvers they can make, that can be considered, you know, leading to less accidents, right?
But there are other options. My point is that there are options. We haven't seen them yet. We've only seen the bike lane option. But there are the possibility of traffic lights, stop signs.
Yeah, I'm only aware of this plan, yeah.
Traffic lights, stop signs, speed bumps?
Yeah, one thing I think a commenter mentioned about Romaine is streets that have stop signs at every intersection, right? That forces cars to obey a stopping maneuver, right? Where Fountain is more for that mobility movement of moving cars through, right? So it doesn't have stop signs everywhere. So there are different, there are different things that can happen to streets, yeah.
Would you say that the width of Fountain, the fact that there are varying widths of Fountain, and then you have, sometimes you have cars there during the day, and sometimes you don't have cars there during the day, is the fact that there are different widths, and so obviously sometimes you have two lanes, sometimes you have one lane, would you say that's kind of adds to the chaos of Fountain?
It is as described in the presentation. It's not a complete street. It was a street at one phase of its existence, and then was developed to become another phase, and that's what the county was working on. And so those are piece-by-piece processes. So eventually, that street right-of-way would be continuous, and it would be like Santa Monica. It would be a flushed-out network from whatever that design was. And we are just in a state of where it's halfway there, for just a phrase of mind, right? And so it is chaotic where you have blocks where there are a full two lanes in each direction plus parking. And then you have blocks where there's two lanes in one direction, but one lane in the other, and there's parking that then gets removed during peak hours to make it two lanes. So right now, we have a situation of an unorthodox or uncomplete street that is kind of manipulated throughout the day.
If we were looking at a different option that didn't necessarily have a protected bike lane, but narrowing the streets because we obviously want to widen the sidewalks, and let's say we want to maintain as many parking spaces as we can because we're going to be losing 62% of the parking spaces with the current option being provided, is it possible to have some of those intersections, left-turn lanes, so that traffic can keep moving and people that want to go left will be in the left-turn lane so that they're not stopping traffic?
There is a situation right now where there are intersections that don't have a capacity lane for people to be out of the way of cars behind them, and that exists today, right? Where if someone wants to turn left off of Fountain, it'll stop the cars behind them, right? In some places, there's two lanes, so then the cars go around them, right? So when you have only one lane, then obviously there's not really a way for the cars behind them to get around, right? They would be needing to go into the protected bike lane kind of zone in this plan, right?
Okay, thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Those are my questions. Are we not doing comments yet?
I think we're doing questions right now.
Just questions, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hang, I saw you put your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe our fire chief is here. May I ask our chief questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm okay with it. It's really your call. Thank you.
Thank you for attending this important meeting.
You bet.
Chief Drew. Chief, can you talk about the two approvals that were granted? I believe one was for the Bureau of Land Use Development.
Correct.
And then there was one that you gave your stamp of approval yourself.
Right, after Land Development Unit looks at it, so we look at a couple of different things. They look on the land development side about how it's laid out, but also if any landscaping's going to be done, because trees all start out small, then they get big, then they compromise our aerial apparatus and other portions of our operations. I looked at it from the operation side of what we currently have compared to what is proposed, and I didn't see any impacts that would jeopardize our operational efficiency. There's pros and cons to both right now. And in totality, for West Hollywood, it's a very challenging city when you have fire apparatus of our size for the nature of our business and what we have to do. So when we have a different response, requires different equipment to get to an emergency scene. So with the congestion in West Hollywood in totality, I didn't see any major impacts that would affect us operationally, what the plans that I saw that were proposed.
So just for our community to understand, the Fire Department issued two approvals for this project.
That is correct.
Thank you very much. From your perspective, will fire engines and ambulances be able to respond just as quickly if maybe even more efficiently once this project is complete?
I can't answer that. I don't know until, we don't know until we seize any data on how that is. And once again, there's a lot of different roles of that compared to, as the timeframes that were shown, is going to be different for us. And plus, the different variables that just happen every day. It could be trash day, it could be a disabled motorist. I mean, there's a magnitude of different things, so it'd be harder to quantify if, how it's actually going to look until it's done.
But two approvals were granted.
That is correct.
Thank you. And, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember.
Since you're here, can I ask a question as well? The approvals that Councilmember Hang is referring to is basically the department saying that you believe that you will be able to respond to emergencies if this plan were to be adopted.
That is correct.
That doesn't necessarily mean you approve the plan, you're agreeing that you have the ability to respond.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your only question? Okay, terrific. Okay, Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you so much. Can you pull up the votes again on the City Council that we took?
Yes. I have a slide that shows the dates. It doesn't have the votes, but I can...
That's fine. So Madam City Clerk, so I'm hearing one of my colleagues say that the vote that we have in the public record is wrong, and I want to make sure the public record is correct on this vote, and if you want to come back when that happens. But I do want to make sure, because I do understand that we should have accurate minutes. When would we have approved the minutes from the December 2023 meeting then?
They would have been approved at the January 2024 meeting.
And this topic came up because Councilmember Shine was on the council at that point too as well.
In December of 2023, yes.
Great. And I believe City Manager Wilson, you corrected the record at the same time with the streetscape vote, but I just want to make sure, because my colleague, Councilmember Meister, if, I want to make sure her votes are accurately reflected for the record. So if she is saying that she voted no in December 2023, can, well, then what did you, I would love to, you voted for a streetscape project. I believe your exact quote was, "I'm going to hold my nose and vote for this, but I would like the streetscape project." Okay, well, we can look at the minutes, but maybe some direction if the minutes are not reflective enough of this, because I want to make sure the public record is correct.
Okay. So just so I understand, what do you need?
I'm just wondering, to your best ability, what was the vote count then?
What is in the minutes that are available online is what was approved by the council at the time.
And that was unanimous?
If that's what the minutes reflected, then yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I have, do you have more questions?
I just wanted to clarify the point that Councilmember Erickson is making, because I recall that there was a discussion of a Fountain streetscape plan that included bike lanes, and we discussed that. And there was a majority of the council, in fact, the entire council, that wanted to move forward with a streetscape plan. Some council members were very gung-ho for bike lanes, and other council members wanted to see other options to improve safety on the street. And we all voted to move forward with the planning process to give us information. But that vote did not reflect that all members of the council supported bike lanes, and I think that is well documented in the discussion that occurred at that time.
Thank you. I have a few questions for the project team based on some of the public input that we received tonight. And again, thank you for the presentation. I have heard the idea that there could be a center lane as an alternative. And I think if we're sticking with the plan as it's drawn out with the two protected bike lanes on either side, is there any feasibility for a center lane?
That would require some additional analysis. I believe that for something like that to be possible, more parking may have to be removed to have enough space for protected bike lanes and a center lane. I can check with Natalie Chiba if she's available. Are you aware of whether that's a possibility, given the roadway segment?
And I know we're talking about a matter of feet and inches when it comes to the width of the street and what's really feasible.
It would require full parking removal on both sides, the north and south side.
And it sounds like there is a question about turning restrictions that sort of left to the council based on some commission input. I know that there's a lot of left-turn restrictions from the neighborhood streets onto Fountain itself, but does this also include the potential for restrictions of left turns from Fountain into the neighborhood streets, or is that some...
There, so that comment is regarding the currently existing restrictions that have been installed sort of on an ad hoc basis, following a safety study. There are a couple that, where there are bollards in the center of Fountain that does restrict lefts off of Fountain as well. But mostly, they're forced right turns off side streets.
And there are some areas where the road wobbles in that way and may be wider, so there could be existing space where it may already be for a turn lane, or in most, for a left turn lane, sorry, on Fountain to some of the neighborhood streets where it currently exists. But in this reimagined plan, that would probably be eliminated, and the street would stay one lane in both directions with no space for some of those middle left turns.
Just to clarify, are you, are you asking about the left-turn pockets?
That's right. That's what you're calling those.
Oh, I'm sorry. My previous response was about...
No, I think I followed your previous response.
Okay, okay. So there are, so with the current design, there are spaces where a vehicle could wait, depending on how the motorists position themselves in an intersection, and someone could drive around without a turn pocket. Turn pockets could be added to the design, but they come at the expense of parking. As many as eight spaces could be lost per intersection based on the geometry change.
Okay, and that would certainly be a decision we'd have to make at this point because the protected bike lanes are in that space, isn't it? Okay. And the other complication of the sort of waiting, stacking of vehicles to turn left is also determined by the width of the vehicle in question, too. So there's other complications that aren't really within our control here?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And then as far as future traffic studies would go about how this plan would proceed and other changes that could be made, things like, as we heard, the east side of La Brea has stop signs instead of streetlights. Are things like that a possibility as we continue forward with a plan like this?
So I think in terms of adjustments, whether it's for a fire or trash collection or traffic spillover into neighborhoods before doing a larger, a more permanent project.
Thank you, it's really helpful. There are some comments made, and I will sort of just check this against you to make sure the public is getting some of the responses they were asking for. There was a comment made about Metro coming, you know, the desire for more public transportation. We are working on bringing Metro to West Hollywood, and that will be maybe several decades away.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I wanted to double-check, the option for Santa Monica continuously comes up, Willoughby even. We have, as you mentioned, projects that are sort of in the pipeline. Willoughby has been stalled, but the Santa Monica bike lane study is also stalled. I know one challenge that we discussed at this council regarding Santa Monica as an option is, again, the limitations and width of the road. And so even in looking at Santa Monica as a possibility, on the east side, largely the reason there aren't already the painted bike lanes is because of the limited space. Is that correct?
It would largely require, most likely require eliminating street parking.
And in many cases on the east side, there isn't even street parking, so traffic lanes itself could also be impacted on Santa Monica.
Potentially.
Okay, it's a study that's still underway, though.
Yes.
Great. And then this question of enforcement, we've been doing several, thanks to the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department and the grants that they pursued, several bicycle, pedestrian, motorist safety days of action out there. I think we've had four as a city so far, and maybe one planned, I could be off on that. And maybe it's more appropriate that our Director of Public Safety, Community Safety, speak to this. But I'm mostly looking for a head nod and maybe some reporting or feedback about what that's looked like. And I know we received a memo on council side about the number of collisions and crashes that have occurred. But I think the ticketing, the citations, all of that is an important factor to raise, too. And thank you for coming down, I appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we have been doing, at the West Hollywood Sheriff's Station, a number of operations as it relates to traffic safety. And in addition to that, as a part of regular traffic enforcement, there have been a number of increased focused enforcement efforts along Fountain Avenue just for this calendar year. And I do have our captain, Captain Lachlan, that just provided me with some statistics. So in January, we had 29 citations that were issued for Fountain Avenue. And in comparison to Santa Monica Boulevard and Sunset, that was the highest for that month. In February, that increased to 108, which was a significant increase, again, when compared to those other two commercial thoroughfares that I mentioned. March, we had 85 citations, April, we had 53, and in May, we had 123. So we're definitely concentrating our efforts with our motor units to do various enforcement different days and different times.
Thank you, I appreciate sharing that information. We've talked to, and you don't have to answer this, but about the restraints, or, sorry, the constraints around bringing more deputies online to do that sort of traffic impact. It's why I believe these grants were pursued, to sort of create a new context. We know that when these citations are available, it can help shift behavior, but four or five of these may not totally do that. So I appreciate the data that this has brought forward to us. And are there more of these enforcement days scheduled?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have from the grant, I believe, two more scheduled. We just had one last week that the numbers were 53 citations for both distracted drivers and the bicycle pedestrian safety. So I believe we have two left for the end of the year.
Thank you, and thank you so much for the work to pursue those grants in order to make that possible. On the, well, I don't want to get into comments, that would be more of a comment. Let me just make sure. Oh, I wanted to ask about the grant that we received from, is it the California Air Resource Board? Am I getting that right?
That's correct.
Okay. What conditions did they see fitting to give us such a large sum of money for this project?
So that grant is predicated on a high-quality bicycle facility. It was a competitive grant. So any changes to the project design would require a change to our application and a rescoring. A painted bike lane or anything that's not seen as an exceptional bicycle facility would most likely lead to the city losing the grant.
And the reason they, for a protected bike facility over a painted bike facility is, I would imagine, because of the utility and the impact of the grant on the project overall?
It's due to the likelihood that protected, the research that shows protected bike lanes lead to more trips completed by non-automotive modes. That's why the Air Board funds these projects.
Is there a timeline on that grant, to use that grant?
There is. The, one moment, please.
Thanks, Christine.
We'll ask your planner, Christine Chen, to join us.
Yeah, thanks, Christine. This dynamic team is really appreciated tonight. Thank you all.
It's a team effort, thank you.
We are eligible for expenses that are made before April 2028. Okay. Thank you. I believe that gets to the end of my questions, although I'll reserve the right to ask more as they may come up. And I see that Councilmember Hang jumped into the speaker list. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may ask our Director of Public Safety and our new captain, a quick question. I appreciate hearing you both talk about enforcement, but was there enforcement that occurred on the night that Blake Ackerman was killed?
We actually had a pedestrian safety grant operation. Don't quote me on the numbers, I want to say the numbers were 54 citations that, and the grant, the operation ended at 5:00 PM that day.
So on the night of, on a day of enforcement, somebody was still killed?
Unfortunately, yes.
That's very sad. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Erickson?
In the timeline, it says shovels in the ground in fall of 2026. What are some of the processes you can implement to have shovels in the ground sooner?
So that estimate follows an accelerated schedule that staff put together. Various departments met to see how timelines could be shortened, review periods. In addition, the agreement amendment with Farron Pierce that's before you this evening would help facilitate a faster review by reducing the need for the Department of Public Works to go out to bid for additional contractors to provide services during the design process. That is a very aggressive schedule that could be met only if no significant design changes are made this evening. Getting shovels in the ground sooner than that would be extremely difficult.
So as long as there's nothing that changes up here, you could adhere to, for the most part, that schedule?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the dais this time? Okay, we can start moving into deliberation and discussion, discussion and deliberation on this, I think, then. this, I think, then. I really appreciate the, seeing our city team so complete and engaged across so many different sectors on this. To me, that speaks to the impact that this will have on the city as a whole. The different, the perceived difference of what a streetscape plan would be and the idea that this came from the desire to see a bike lane and specifically a protected bike lane in a neighborhood. For me, from the outset of this project, even before I was on council, just somebody in the community rooting for, you know, better quality of life in the city for all people, I really saw this as something that would address some of the longstanding inequalities across our community while at the same time addressing some of our bigger goals that are articulated through the Climate Action Plan. One thing that really struck me about this street in particular is while it is one of the smallest stretches of road across our very small 1.89 square mile city, it contributes to 36% of greenhouse gas emissions in our city, according to the Climate Action Plan in 2021. And for me, that is a real question of what commitment West Hollywood has towards the regional goals around climate as well. I also can't dismiss the reality that HLA in Los Angeles, which was a streets mobility plan to pursue more bike lanes across the city, happened around the same time. And West Hollywood was stepping into a bigger regional discussion about what type of city we wanted to be, what type of life we wanted to support, and how we were going to achieve a really broad set of goals in our community. And I think this project accomplishes a lot. While it's, you know, in many ways imperfect, it is a really comprehensive approach to so many challenges. And I applaud, first, the community frankly, for making sure that we were thinking of so many different things when it came to this. And the project team for being very responsive to a number of really complex challenges. I certainly recognize that the community as a whole will be differently impacted by this. Some people will have different experiences. The loss of parking is certainly a challenge. I'm feeling it in my own neighborhood as state law allows for parking to be removed from buildings, which is happening in the case of my own building. And tenants are asked to park on the street. And so these things are happening. And that didn't happen without a public hearing. It's happening. And we're adapting to the changes and people are moving forward. So I really understand and have been reckoning for many years now with the very complex reality of what change looks like and how we experience it together. And I know that this has been a very fraught process, very emotional. The meetings have been tense. The discussions have been very heightened. And I think there's been a feeling of erasure of experiences on both sides, which is a weird thing to say because I think there's not really two sides. There's so many different opinions about this experience. There was a few comments suggesting that this should be taken to a community-wide vote. And what I keep coming back to is the experience of young people in this community, people who are under the age of 18, who live all across the city, but particularly on the east side around one of our greatest community gems, Palmer Park. And will have a very different experience of traveling and commuting around the city should this protected bike lane be approved. And that for me is part of a vision for the future that I think so many people, not just in this city, not just in this region, but across this country and around the world are really asking for. And that may not be a vision shared by everyone. And I feel the head nods shaking at me right now. And that's totally fine, I think, in fact. We have to reckon with it. Because there's a past that many of us have participated in that we didn't agree to either. And I think that's part of the challenge of what inequality looks like, how we move forward in a way that addresses some of the constraints that too many people have experienced and find a different pathway forward. So I just really appreciate the discussion, as intense as it has been. I do think it's gotten us to a really good place. I'm gonna see who wants to jump in as council, but just wanted to sort of set a tone for myself as we engage in this discussion. Vice Mayor Heilmann?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. And thank you for leading us through this discussion and trying to keep order and trying to keep people on track. So I really appreciate that. I want to thank everyone who has spoken on this item tonight and all of the people who have provided input at other meetings as well. I also share the frustration that some people expressed tonight about the public process and about how some of it appeared to be really just performative. We were engaged in public process with something that already seemed like a fait accompli without really listening and hearing all of the different views that were being expressed. I am going to break my comments into four subsections. First, I want to talk about what I believe are some inaccuracies and misconceptions in the staff report. Second, I want to address some concerns about CEQA. Third, I want to discuss how we should be analyzing an issue like this. And finally, I want to talk about what I think we should do and how we create a safer fountain and how do we address the legitimate desires of the people who want a protected bike path. So as you saw tonight, we have a large team working on this project and they are all smart and dedicated city employees and consultants. And I appreciate all the work that has been put in and you've been under a lot of pressure to move forward with this. Despite this, I think there are some statements in the staff report that are not accurate or are creating misconceptions or misperceptions and some that I don't think withstand critical analysis. On several occasions, the report suggests that the primary goal of the project was to make the streets safer and that the report was prepared in response to concerns about safety. That is not accurate. This entire endeavor was triggered and started to put bike lanes on Fountain. The genesis, thank you. The genesis of this endeavor was about bike lanes. It was not about traffic calming. It was not about traffic safety. That was added on later and I fully support the issues about traffic calming and traffic safety. One of the justifications for the bike lane recommendation is that 64% of the traffic on Fountain is cut through traffic. But that's true of Sunset. It's true of Santa Monica. It's true of all the traffic in West Hollywood. We're surrounded on three sides by the city of LA and on the fourth side by the city of Beverly Hills. We're less than two square miles. And some of us drive exclusively in West Hollywood, but I would bet that the most of our residents who are driving or biking are going into other cities because that's where they need to go to commute. We are part of a region and the traffic that we deal with is regional traffic, just like when we drive in the city of LA, we're part of the region as well. I don't think we would feel comfortable if LA suddenly disregarded the needs of West Hollywood commuters who are commuting in LA. Another justification that is given is that Fountain carries 35,000 vehicles a day. That to me is a justification that proves too much. Staff has no explanation for where those vehicles are going to go if this proposal is implemented. Staff indicates that Fountain is listed as a neighborhood-serving collector street, and yes, it is. But we all know that it isn't. It is not an accurate designation. It has never been a neighborhood-serving collector street as long as we have been a city. So in more than 40 years of cityhood, the fact that it's been improperly designated should not be a justification for changing current traffic patterns. Staff compares the accident history on Fountain in West Hollywood to the accident history on Fountain in Los Angeles, but that's not an accurate comparison. It would be like comparing the accident history on Robertson north of Santa Monica to the accident history on Robertson south of Beverly. Those two streets, those two sections act in different ways and have different components to them. You wouldn't compare the accident history on Doheny in West Hollywood to the accident history on Doheny north of Sunset. Those streets function very differently and have different land uses. Staff also makes a statement, and a number of people have quoted it, that 36% of the fatal crashes are on Fountain, even though Fountain only accounts for 4% of our roadway. But that's not an accurate comparison. Most of our roadway is small residential streets that don't carry this level of traffic. The more appropriate analysis would be to compare Fountain's traffic history to the traffic history on other major streets like Santa Monica and Sunset. And I think if we look at it, we'll see that Fountain accident history is really no different than the other streets that carry similar volumes of traffic. One of my biggest concerns and criticisms of the staff report is where the report says the project would not result in a traffic impact. How does staff get to this remarkable conclusion? Well, by a sleight of hand. When we consider new developments, we analyze the number of new trips that are generated by a new development. New trips or new miles traveled is how we analyze traffic for purposes of a new development. It is not how we should be analyzing traffic for purposes of a street project. I think we all know that this proposal, whether you support it or oppose it, will increase traffic as we experience it. It is going to result in those 35,000 vehicles going elsewhere in the city, either on side streets or on Santa Monica or on Sunset, which are already clogged throughout the day. That's how most of us perceive traffic. Clogged streets and significant delay cause large number of vehicles to be delayed and that's how we experience traffic. Finally, staff rushes over the loss of 210 parking spaces. A number of speakers commented on this. Staff has no real answer to this problem. Asking people who live on Fountain to park in the parking lot at Crescent Heights and Santa Monica is silly. It does not work. Asserting that some of the residential streets can accommodate the lost spots is also silly because most of those streets are already fully parked. And, and making reference to the fact that Fountain is underparked at, in the afternoon, that doesn't make sense. That's when most people are at work. Of course, people who are working during the day are not going to be using Fountain to park because they're at work. The second point I want to make has to do with CEQA, CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff does not recommend a full CEQA analysis. Instead, staff suggests that we rely on a categorical exemption which exempts bicycle facilities. While there is a categorical exemption, it does not apply when there are unusual circumstances. The staff's own analysis demonstrates that there are unusual circumstances. Fountain carries a high volume of traffic. That traffic will be delayed or diverted by the project. At a minimum, there's a fair argument that the project will result in a significant increase in vehicle emissions as vehicles are delayed. In addition, the circumstances are unusual because this street is marked by numerous residential properties and a high number of driveways. The suggestion that physical changes to the roadway are minor is also not borne out by the staff report or by the significant cost of those improvements. We cannot and should not rely on a CEQA exemption for a project that has the potential to disrupt long-standing local and regional traffic patterns. The third point I want to make is about the nature of this decision. And I think the public input and the public comment tonight and throughout this process demonstrates that there are a lot of people who feel very passionately about this project. Everyone who has spoken on this project has legitimate concerns and legitimate desires. And in a sense, I will tell you, you're all right. All of you are right in terms of your comment. The people who are advocates for bike lanes, you're absolutely right. We do need protected bike lanes. The people who are advocates for retaining Fountain as it is or improving safety, you're right. The advocates for parking for residents, you're all right. It is our job though, as council members, to try to strike a balance between competing interests. On one hand, we have people who want a bike lane for east-west commuting. There are people who have spoken about the impact of removing parking for residents who rely on it because their buildings do not have any parking. There are those of you who spoke in particular about improving safety on Fountain without disrupting well-established travel patterns. And others have raised concerns about diversion of traffic to other streets that already lack capacity. So that brings us to what should we do? Well, I think what we need to do is be balanced in our approach to this, listen to everyone, be thoughtful in our decision-making. Going in one direction and ignoring others is not an appropriate solution. I think we try to do some things that everyone agrees on. The first thing that I think everyone agrees on is that there needs to be greater safety on Fountain. Everyone agrees to that. We should support both long-term and short-term improvements. Staff's recommendation of adding lead time for pedestrian intervals makes perfect sense. Setting traffic signals so that they recall, so that people cannot drive the entire length without stopping, that makes sense. I will tell you that the other morning, normally I can't get up to Fountain. I live on La Cienega. I'm forced to go south because of the volumes of traffic. But I left early in the morning. I was able to get onto Fountain and I drove on Fountain from La Cienega all the way to La Brea without hitting a single red light, which I, I was very happy about because I was a bit late. But I think it is also something that we can fix so that there are instances where you have to stop, that you cannot continue to move through the entirety of that street without hitting a red light. I don't support the short-term suggestion, and I think staff may be backtracking on this, of lifting the peak hour parking restrictions. I don't think that will improve safety. I think we will have, as staff indicated, people being in the traffic, in the, what is now the parking lane, and then when cars are in that lane, they'll be merging back into the travel lane. It will create greater problems. It will also create a backup of traffic on La Cienega and on Holloway. If you are on those streets at rush hour, traffic frequently backs up into Santa Monica and La Cienega because people are all trying to use Fountain to go east. I think we should also lobby the state to allow us to reinstitute red light camera enforcement on Fountain. I do agree with my colleagues that enforcement alone is not going to solve the safety problems. There needs to be changes, physical changes, that will improve safety. Some of those changes are paving, some of those are creating better timing on the, the lights. I think long-term, we need to be looking at additional signalized intersections on Fountain. That can impact the residential streets, but I think it is necessary to give people the opportunity to cross Fountain safely at, at more locations. And it would also result in slowing traffic on Fountain. And certainly repaving Fountain, improving the appearance of crosswalks on the street, all of those I would support. I do support an east-west bike lane, but I do not support putting it on Fountain. I think doing so would, I think it would create major disruption to existing traffic patterns. And a safer and better and more viable option would be to put an east-west bike lane on Willoughby. There would still be impacts to parking. There would still be impacts to traffic, but the volume of traffic currently on Willoughby is not that great. The parking impacts can be managed much more effectively than they can be on Fountain. Putting the bike lane on Fountain will cause a significant loss in parking for our residents as well as a significant disruption of neighborhood as well as a significant disruption of regional transit. I think we also should be mindful, and I appreciate the people who are cyclists. And I know that some additional people might become cyclists in the future, but But currently, and I think for the foreseeable future, most of our residents commute by car. Probably 90% of our residents commute by car. That is not going to change. Even if we put in bike lanes on Fountain, Santa Monica, and Willoughby, and Beverly, most of our residents are going distances where commuting by bike just isn't feasible for them. And plenty of our residents, for physical reasons, are not able to bike significant distances. My final point, and I know I've been talking for a long time, but we all listen to you. I think if we're going to move forward with a committee, we need to have a committee that is far more balanced than the committee we have. Having the process for committee members to be drawn from our commissions and boards results in the bicyclists who are on those commissions and boards putting themselves forward to be on this committee. And that results in a committee that is unbalanced. And I think we definitely need to have a committee with balanced thought and definitely with representation from people on Fountain. So thank you for indulging me for my long comments.
Thank you. Who would like to jump in and go next? Oh, don't all raise your hands at once. Whatever you'd like. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor, for leading this meeting. And I want to thank all the members of the community for coming tonight. And I want to thank staff for the very robust presentation, along with thanking our public safety partners for answering my direct questions. You know, Fountain Avenue has long been one of the most dangerous corridors in our city. And in just over a decade, we've seen dozens of severe crashes and five lives lost. Those aren't just numbers. Those are our neighbors, our friends, and family members. And for me, the most important measure of success is simple: fewer people getting hurt and more people getting home safely. This issue hits close to me, hits close to home for me because my partner was T-boned making a left turn onto Havenhurst from Fountain. He was nearly killed and was taken to Cedar Sinai. I haven't really shared that with all of my colleagues up here. And the day that the accident happened, I did inform our city manager as well as our Director of Public Safety. So that hit close to home for me. I've never shared that before because I didn't want to politicize his accident. But it certainly hits close to home. And this redesign prioritizes safety above all else: narrower lanes, protected bike paths, safer crossings. And these are proven tools that save lives. We cannot continue to accept speeding cars and fatal crashes as a status quo on Fountain Avenue. But this project is also about equity. The east side, where so much of our corridor runs, is home to many working families. And many people don't have cars across the city as well. And they rely on walking or cycling or scootering as their method of transit. And safety shouldn't be a privilege. It's a right for everybody, even for those who don't own vehicles. And everyone, regardless of income, whether they own a car, deserves to feel safe moving through their own neighborhood. Yes, there are trade-offs. Parking will be reduced. Traffic will look different. Change is never easy. But the bigger picture is clear. This is about creating a Fountain Avenue that works for people, not just for cars speeding through our community. This project helps us meet our climate goals, supports mobility for all, and honors our responsibility to protect all lives: drivers, cyclists, and people who walk. And I firmly believe that we will look back on this decision as a turning point. When we chose to put people first, when we made Fountain Avenue safer, healthier, and more equitable for the next generation in West Hollywood. And I am very proud to support this item. That concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I read this staff report, I have to say that the staff report actually convinced me that a bike lane is not the only option. First of all, you have in one of your tables the Fountain versus percent of citywide total injury crashes, fatal crashes, severe crashes, pedestrian crashes, bicycle crashes, speed-involved crashes. The lowest of pedestrian bicycle speed involved is bicycle crashes at 4%. And then the percentage of citywide total is 9%, which says to me that there are other streets in the city that have more bicycle crashes than Fountain, if that is an average. It's very hard to tell when you have numbers in one place and percentages in another. And you show other streets like Santa Monica Boulevard and Melrose, but then in the table you don't. You just have the citywide total. But again, bicycle crashes are 4%. Pedestrian crashes on Fountain is close to 10%. And so why pedestrians weren't made the priority, which is what a lot of people ask for, is it doesn't make sense to me. The whole reason of doing a streetscape project was to be able to look at Fountain holistically. And as Vice Mayor Heilman said, this was never done. What was done was bike lane was put first. And I understand council majority pushed that agenda, and that's what happened. And then streetscape, second. But that doesn't make any sense because a streetscape project is supposed to look at, again, the whole street holistically. Fountain, you know, I think the differences in width of the street are part of the problem. And again, where you said that it's safer east of, where staff said that it's safer east of La Brea on Fountain rather than west of La Brea, and there is no protected bike lane on Fountain east of La Brea, says that there are other factors involved. And it's not about the bike lane. It's about the width of Fountain and how it changes. It's about the left-turn lanes. It's about the driveways. It's about all of these other factors. But none of those factors are being studied because we're not doing a streetscape project until after the fact. So if we really wanted to make Fountain safer and slow down traffic, we can't say that slowing down traffic is the same as adding a protected bike lane because those are two separate issues. And in fact, as one of the speakers mentioned, if you're going to have a protected bike lane, it's not going to change the speed of the drivers next to them. I think the fact that there are 120 driveways, and some of them may be very little distance between each driveway, there's going to be accidents with bicyclists thinking they are safe because they're in a protected bike lane and cars driving into their driveway or driving out of their driveway. I think it's going to give a false sense of security to bicyclists. Bike lanes don't slow down traffic. Traffic mitigations slow down traffic: traffic lights, stop signs, speed bumps, red light cameras, as Vice Mayor mentioned. It really concerns me that in the staff report, you talked about enhancing livability. Where does removing 62% of the on-street parking spaces, that's 210 spaces out of 337, enhance livability? It doesn't enhance livability for the residents living on Fountain. And then the solutions are not proven solutions. You talk about angled parking, but angled parking on side streets, that needs a certain width. Most of those side streets are narrow, and you can't put angled parking on those streets. It won't solve the 200-plus lost parking spaces. Two public parking lots near people's homes that are not near people's homes? That's not enhancing livability. Are you also proposing a shuttle to get them from Santa Monica and Crescent Heights to Fountain and Harper or wherever? I mean, that's not going to happen. And people who are with their kids, picking them up from school or coming home with groceries, coming back from work at 8 o'clock at night during the winter when it's dark, that's not enhancing livability. That's creating a public safety problem. I think that where it's wide enough to put in a center turn lane, that might make sense. Where it's not wide enough, put in traffic lights or do four-way stops. If you did those things, you could most likely keep most of the parking. Again, like waste collection, the fact that there's no place for the trucks to move over, to pull over, to allow traffic through, you are going to find that people are going to drive around them. And that is going to cause a safety problem. I think it's interesting, we got today a, and I'm not sure why we got it, but we got a comparison of Santa Monica Boulevard, Fountain, and Melrose for traffic collisions, speeding tickets, and fatalities, and property damage. But what was interesting to me was that on Fountain, from 2015 to 2024, all of those numbers decreased. So something is working, right? I mean, you went from 113 traffic collisions in 2015 to 74. You went from 160 speeding tickets to 32. You know, I mean, it just seems to me that there is something working. And it doesn't mean that it's a, that the need is there for a protected bike lane. You did not look at other options, even for a bike lane. So if we would have done a streetscape project, you would have brought back options. And you would have brought back options with and without bike lanes. And some of them, maybe one would have been a protected bike lane like you have here. Maybe it would have been a two-way bike lane on one side of the street, which would have freed up, you know, 10 feet of width on the street, which could have been to save parking spaces. Maybe you would have widened the sidewalks and included a bike lane on the sidewalk, you know, where it's already protected because it's above the curb. It's above the street level where the cars are. You know, but we don't know because we didn't see options. And when I voted for a streetscape project, that's what I voted for. I voted for us to study this and for you to come back with options. And I understand why it didn't happen. But I just want to make it really clear that the fact that now we're going to, you know, if we do this, and then you're going to go ahead and do the streetscape project, it's kind of a waste of some time and some money. And we might be possibly losing good options because they won't be considered now because you've already, you know, brought forward this. I'm also going to say that, you know, a few years ago, UCLA did a study about cars and the fact that it's actually lower-income people who need their cars more than anyone because they need to take their kids to work and get to their job. And they may have more than one job. They may have two jobs. That doesn't happen on a bicycle. You don't take two kids to school on a bicycle. So this narrative that, you know, of equity, you need to think about that. That's why, for those people, cars may be important. And they certainly don't want to be parking at Crescent Heights and Santa Monica Boulevard to walk up to their apartment on Fountain. So, and then the other thing I wanted to mention, as we talk about immediate actions that we can do now, I'm wondering if we should take the sharrows off of Fountain. Because if it's not safe for, if it's not safe to bicycle on Fountain right now, then maybe the sharrows shouldn't be there. Because again, it's giving bicyclists...
Excuse me.
Thank you very much. It's giving bicyclists a false sense of security. It doesn't mean you can't bike there. If you want to bicycle there, go ahead. But you're giving people a false sense of security by having that shallow on Fountain right now. And so I would consider that an immediate action...
Excuse me.
...if you want to talk about immediate actions. In terms of the restricted, the restrictions, the turn restrictions that you want us to decide on, quite frankly, I think that our traffic engineering department should be looking at that and telling us what makes sense because they are the experts, and we are not the experts at traffic management. And that's really obvious. And those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Chris, when we met as staff report, you said that this was a streetscape plan.
Correct.
Is this a streetscape plan?
It's a two-phased streetscape plan, the first phase being interim.
Great. So just one more time for the record, this is a two-phased streetscape plan before us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
I've listened to you for three hours. Let it go. Stop. Otherwise, we'll call a recess, and you'll get kicked out. So you can stay and listen, or you don't have to. How's that sound? Stop. It's our turn to talk now. Stop. Okay, Mayor, I would like to call a, I would like to see if we could call a recess because clearly people don't know how to remain decorum.
Please do not be disruptive. Thank you.
We all got to listen to you, just like everyone else did. You may not like what I have to say, but you're going to listen to it because that's my right as well. So additionally, we have in terms, Mayor, I'm going to request a recess. I think it's time we take a recess because it's just, people seem to not be able to control themselves.
Because of your rules.
Excuse me, please. It doesn't warrant a back and forth. It is the council's turn to deliberate. I appreciate the opportunity for public comment as we had it already. Thank you so much for allowing the discussion to continue. Please do not force us to empty these chambers. We have many items on the agenda ahead. Thank you.
Wonderful. So in speeding tickets from 2015 to 2024, there were 224 speeding tickets on Santa Monica Boulevard. There were 188 speeding tickets on Melrose. And there were 2,719 speeding tickets on Fountain Avenue. When we looked at this plan holistically, I just got to say that, you know, frankly, it was my original item back in 2021 when I introduced it with now-supervisor Lindsey Horvath. And I think it's important to know that it has been supported multiple times through different iterations and different councils because I think we all want to hope that we're getting to a better place on Fountain. And then I would like to believe that we all want to see a safer Fountain Avenue. And I still hope to this day that that is what we're looking at. But this isn't a new idea. In 2017, the pedestrian and bike mobility plan identified Fountain to have widened sidewalks, facilitated bike lanes, and increased public safety that we could do. But it didn't get implemented by the council. Maybe Vice Mayor Heilman could talk a little bit about why back then I wasn't on the council. But these are things that need to occur, and this process has been in process. but these are things that need to occur and this process has been in process because to say that it is something brand new that has just popped up is, is just, I'm sorry, I just don't buy that. Specifically Fountain Avenue is a very dangerous street. We're always told not to say that on the record, thanks, Madam City Attorney. And the fact that the council is being advised by our city attorney to not say that on the record shows the liability that the city faces for not improving a street. That is just simple legal liability that we face as a city that could bankrupt the city, meaning social services get impacted, public safety gets impacted. Everything could get impacted that we hold dear because we do have a sound fiscal, fiscally responsible budget that we invest back into the community. This controls and takes and helps out with our greenhouse gas emissions. And frankly, as someone who literally knocked pretty much every single door from La Brea all the way down to Los Yenega multiple times, the number one thing I heard, you might not have been home, I don't know you, I'm sorry you're shaking your head, but I got to tell you, I would say, they'd said, do you want to support making Fountain safer? I said, yes. And here's what I would like us to do. I don't care what you do, change it. I'm tired of being woken up in the middle of the night by someone being hit by a car, my property being damaged. The number one thing we do in my building on Fountain Avenue, literally, when someone moves in, I just did it, is say, hey, don't park on the street. Like the fact that that's the welcome package that we have to give to our neighbors is just like laughable. And frankly, a lot of the people coming to advocate against this, I don't, not advocating against safety, have single-family homes and driveways and two-car garages. I mean, I know where you live. It's a small town. So like, don't sit there and think that like, we don't know that you don't live on Fountain Avenue. Some of you do. I don't want to discredit that. I know some of you do live on Fountain, but a lot of you don't. And a lot of you have parking and a lot of you have single-family homes with multiple ways to park and be safe and do what you got to do. That doesn't mean you shouldn't have an opinion, but I want to take into the equity conversation that we're supposed to be having up here because that is not fair to people who don't have that opportunity and right. And frankly, there has been a lot of misinformation about what's been going on. And I'm sorry I say it, I know it's a broken drum, but it is unfortunate. And I mean, the sheer fact that someone accused city staff of getting construction contracts for some type of pay-to-play something is like the most insulting thing I've ever heard as a council member because it is truly laughable. Our city staff has spent years on this staff report from multiple iterations back in 2017 with the pedestrian mobility plan to come back to now to literally be almost sometimes attacked by members of the public for even trying to make sure that they could know what's going on to then having their integrity questioned because they're just doing their jobs. It is, that is egregious. Like who are we? Truly, who are we as a community? Who are you as a community member to sit there and question people who are doing their job? It is offensive and we are better than that. You are all better than that and you are better than that. And the reason is, is because this has to stop. Period. The way that it's become so vitriolic is just insane. Like I, I cannot imagine how, you all did such a great job at the community meeting. I have never seen, seriously, so many people attend and I saw every staff member be attentive to questions and answers and allowing the process to take place. Could it have happened more? Sure. Cities can always do better and we should always do better. That's not to say that the process by itself hasn't been thought with integrity and with truly thoughtful processes put into place. And I understand that my colleagues, some of them, take, take issue with what's in the report. That's fine. You all have the degrees in the stuff that is before us. That's it. We don't, I'm not a traffic engineer. And I have to go with what's before me. Now, I do want to say that I support this project. It was literally my item back in 2021, so you probably know where I'm going to vote. But ultimately, this is something that we need to move forward to make everyone safer. This is my backyard and the sheer fact that I walk by Blake Ackerman's ghost bike every single day to walk my dog is truly one of the most haunting experiences I have ever had to experience. The fact that I was not here because I decided to go on vacation with my family when that happened to be with my community members and friends who are deeply, deeply mourning was, I, I was heartbroken by it because I saw how hurtful it was because of the lack of inaction. And this process that we've been going through for five years is killing people. It's just that simple. It is, it's killing people. The bureaucratic process itself has failed so many people because it's meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. And whoever that public commenter was that said, we don't have this for these things, was, is totally right. And I hope that we do better. I know that we will do better. I plan on supporting this item tonight and I would encourage everyone to seriously, someone called upon God here earlier. Thank you very much. Always need Jesus or whoever you want to worship in your life. Fine by me. But I would seriously ask people to call on their better angels. That's all I got to say. I plan to support this project tonight. Thank you to everyone that came out to speak in either way, shape and form. And I think we need to move forward and move on.
Thank you. I, the conversations focus so much on safety and that is certainly an important aspect, but it is certainly not the only thing that this project seeks to transform. Many of the city's climate goals are folded into what's possible here, cutting down on the amount of through traffic while yes, it will go other places. We also heard and know that many are eager to transition away from their car-dependent route and have been desperate for a safer opportunity to do so. We know public transportation is an option, but the, the four-bus move slow. It is the slowest in West Hollywood and that is often because of the cars that are competing with it. Bikes are a really effective way and people have been asking for that and they do not feel safe in most of the places of this community. And for me, looking at this as an opportunity to address safety and climate are major, major things in this city. There is also the reality of cost. Car insurance rates are rising. It is expensive to maintain a personal vehicle. There are many other challenges that come with it. And while we know that many of our residents here are transitioning to EV vehicles, that is not the only reality. Cars themselves contribute to climate beyond the emissions they produce, the paint of the cars themselves, sitting on sidewalks, taking up space from where trees can go. You can groan, it's a study, it's real and we have to start taking this seriously. We cannot create a heat island in an increasingly heat, hot planet in a hot community. This is a real issue. It's why we're trying to address building codes. It's why we're trying to create more shade in this community and every parked car is a missed opportunity for something else to be there. There are people, and it may not be you, but there are people who are eager to transition and it is a city's responsibility to recognize that and help support that coming in. I'm troubled by the assumption and assertion that 90% of residents commute by car. I don't know that that's in fact a fact and regardless of whether it is, the reality that many want to transition is real. And this brings me back to this question of community and quality of life. And again, while maybe 90% of residents commute by car, again, kids don't and they can ride a bike. And the idea that a family member wouldn't want to have their kids on a bike getting to school but would need a car is a very strange assertion about what type of family structures exist, what people are looking for. And I don't think it's our responsibility to assert what has to happen for a family. It's our responsibility to create options for a diverse community, which is what we have here. And that is something that's really important to me, especially in this extremely dense area of our community. Kids especially have been locked inside of their homes. And as we heard tonight many times, it is because cars and collisions and the violence they experience interacting with them is the number one contributor to kids' deaths. And that is a horrific reality that we can transform without having to send families to suburbs. We know through data that protected bike lanes are the best tool to get people riding more bikes. That is, that is a fact. A painted bike lane isn't going to do it the same way. You heard people on their own experiences. I don't, I don't think that butterflies don't exist because I don't see them every day. I ask myself what conditions we need to create as a city to bring more of them. We are a community that loves the monarchs. We have milkweed. The idea that you don't see a bike every day and you don't ask why that's the case in the most gorgeous climate possible is, is just totally a missed opportunity for me. So I really just want to say that I think this has all been about for me, what type of world we want to live in. And transitions are deeply challenging. We're going through that as a fossil fuel industry, to clean energy. We're going through that in so many ways as the state of California reckons with how we address the extreme challenges around housing. And it absolutely makes sense to me that we are reckoning with that in the terms of transportation as well. As a city, we have put so much resource and time and energy into making sure that we can be a part of the Metro Kaline Northern Extension, but that is still decades away. And the reason we're so eager to bring that is because people are desperate now for these solutions. It's why we have so many people showing up to those community meetings, making sure that we can stay on track and get that happening. And in the meantime, those same people are looking for alternatives. And a bike isn't necessarily an alternative. It's only considered that because we haven't created enough space for it to be a true option for so many people. So for me, it's, while the safety component is certainly important and has been, I think, exhausted in the conversation and as we know, can be received in so many different ways, the reality that climate can be addressed in many different ways on this stretch of road, that's not the case. The reality that we can address cost in any other way without a bike lane isn't the case. Costs will be addressed with the creation of a bike lane. Climate will be addressed with the creation of a bike lane. Community can be better facilitated with the addition of bike lane. That's not going to be something that a couple of stop signs or different streetlights do. It's about a whole new experience for our community. And I really hope that people can understand that because that's what I think the vote is really about tonight. It's about the quality of life that we want to facilitate for more people in our community. And while there have been many different projects, the fact that we came to Fountain as the best place for this, a, a place that is so clearly a place where safety is challenged, it absolutely makes sense to me. I know and I understand the complications. I think the, the challenges with the many driveways are, are real, but I think the idea that cyclists haven't been able to thoughtfully navigate themselves around a community is also very real. And so this protectionism around their experience when cyclists are the experts in that experience and that we are de-centering that expertise in favor of this perception of what might be possible for them is a complete misalignment of what it means to really focus on expertise. And so I appreciate the leadership of the project team and really all of the input that got us to this point. I think I clearly support this project and want to see it move forward. And I just, again, want to really appreciate the tension because it's not over. Making a vote tonight to move this project forward is a vote not just for Phase One protected bike lanes. It's a vote for the space to create the expanded sidewalks, which are something that I believe everyone in this room really shares a desire to see. That couldn't happen without creating this space. We need to expand the space in general with, through the protected bike lanes in order to create those sidewalks. So those are coming and that's part of this vote today. What's also able to come forward are more trees, more artwork, a whole different experience in this area. And I think that's something that we're not talking about and I think it's a real missed thing. So I just want to, again, thank everybody, recognize that this is an ongoing discussion while this vote is happening tonight because we're going to continue to reckon with the way these changes impact people. The parking is a very real thing and you heard staff's commitment tonight to finding creative solutions to solve it. We will know more as things start to change and transform. And I think part of that is people in this community who have communicated their eagerness to abandon their personal vehicle in order to pick up a bicycle. And so I already imagine that there will be a decompression in the amount of cars available when people recognize the opportunity ahead. And so we have to start to allow for the possibility of these things to happen and that starts with the vote tonight. So thank you all again for participating in this discussion.
So I've made a motion and I believe Councilmember Hang has seconded it, so I'll just clarify. So it'd be to approve staff's recommendations as well as I believe the recommendation, which is already, I guess, implied by not changing the design at the moment, that expedited timeline.
I'm sorry, could you repeat yourself?
For the expedited timeline that we, I asked the question about, you said unless there were significant designs, that timeline could be expedited and followed.
That's correct.
Okay. So that is my motion to include, to, to move staff's recommendations.
Terrific. Yes, yeah, of course, Councilmember.
Would it be possible to separate out the recommendations on the vote? So in other words, maybe Recommendation One and Three are together and then Two and Four and, or Two and Four can be separate? I don't know what you think, but, and then Five as a separate, a separate vote?
Why don't we start with Two because I think it's important that we provide clarity. It's about providing direction on the recommended immediate traffic calming measures that can be made. I think staff suggested that we do not at this time lean into the peak parking, but the leading pedestrian intervals and the other light.
Putting the traffic signals on recall.
Thank you. Traffic signals on recall. Those are things that this council supports in whole.
So that's, I'm happy to do that, Councilmember Meister. So just so I can, I'll clarify it. So you would like to do Recommendations Two and Four together? Okay. And then you want to do Recommendation One by itself?
One or One and Three? I, I don't know how, because Three is part of One, so.
Yeah, and then Five.
And then Five is a separate.
Okay. I mean, if that, that's fine by me.
I would appreciate that.
Sure, of course. So Madam City Clerk, I'll clarify, sorry. I'm, we're going to move staff's, my, my motion is to move staff's recommendations, but doing three separate votes, what it looks like, One and Three, Two and Four, and Recommendation Five by itself.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and just do voice votes because I think that might be simpler. So the first vote we will take is on Recommendations One and Three, which is to consider approval of 30% plans for Phase One of the project. And the other one is approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement for Services with Fair and Peers in the amount of $131,040 to provide construction, management and design contingency for Phase One. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hang.
Aye.
Councilmember Meister.
No.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
No.
Mayor Byers.
Yes.
The motion passes three-two. So now for Recommendations Two and Four. Recommendations Two and Four is to provide direction on recommended immediate traffic calming measures, which I believe are the leading pedestrian.
Intervals.
Intervals and recall streetlights or something to that effect.
Can I clarify, Chris?
Putting the traffic signals on recall.
There we go. Traffic signals on recall. Made in, I'm sorry.
Could we also, I mean, I know you're saying maybe no on the, on the removal of the peak hour parking, but could we include that in here? And could you report back on a future item to just let us know if you, if you can't do it?
We could do an assessment and report back.
I think, I would like to still see what that looks like, just, you know, if that's possible. Are you okay with that? Okay. So including an assessment of the removal of the peak hour parking.
Okay.
A, a report to come back at a later time.
Okay. So it would be provide direction for, and which we have done, on leading pedestrian intervals, traffic signals on recall and an assessment of the removal of peak hour parking. That would be done in the next one to two months ahead of the delivery of Phase One of the project and authorize staff to initiate Phase Two, including the release of an RFP for a Phase Two consultant and the expansion of the steering committee to guide visioning. Okay. Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hang.
Aye.
Councilmember Meister.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Yes.
So that passes. And then Recommendation Number Five is to find Phase One of the Fountain Avenue Streetscape Project statutorily and categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA pursuant to Public Resources Code Sections 21080.25, 15301C and 15304H. Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hang.
Aye.
Councilmember Meister.
No.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
No.
Mayor Byers.
Yes.
And the motion passes three-two.
Thank you all for being a part of the discussion. We're going to take a five-minute break. Can we do that? Okay, 10-minute break before we get into the public hearing, the appeal, the planning commission's approval. Thank you. Thank you.
See if we can start getting settled. Okay. Hey, get back up here. All right, we're gonna bring this room back to order. Please take a seat if you're sticking with us through the next part of this discussion. Thank you so much. We are moving into item C1. Appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a certificate of appropriateness for the renovation of the hotel and conditional approval of a minor conditional use permit amendment to increase the outdoor area where accessory sales, service, and consumption of alcohol permitted for the hotel use located at 8300 Sunset Boulevard. Stop there. We're now going to hear this public hearing item. The public hearing is now open. Can we begin with any disclosures from my colleagues?
Um, Mayor, I was engaged in discussions with the appellant.
I met with the appellant.
I haven't met with either party, but I did say hello to both the attorney, the attorneys on both sides who I know.
Counselmember Meister.
Nope.
Nothing. I also met with the appellant. City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law, thank you.
Thank you. And will the staff representative please introduce yourself and present the staff report? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Nick Marisich, Director of Community Development, still joined by our Assistant Director, Jennifer Alkire, and we have Simon Koreshi, our Planning Manager for Current and Historic Preservation Planning, and Senior Planner Doug Vu, who will be giving this evening's presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Byers, and members of the City Council. The item before you is an appeal of the Planning Commission's June 5, 2025, adoption of a categorical exemption and approval for renovation of the hotel at 8300 Sunset Boulevard, which is located at the southwest corner of Sunset Boulevard and Sweetsr Avenue. The major component of the renovation includes the addition of an approximately 14,000-square-foot rooftop garden and landscape deck containing 9,388 square feet of amenity space with lawn areas, a walking track, and seating areas that will have a maximum occupancy of 399 people. A sound system will be installed utilizing directional speakers and sound control software to contain noise and comply with the city's noise ordinance. The two existing elevators and two exterior stairs at the east and west perimeter of the building will be extended to provide access to this outdoor space. And also, new glass and metal frame sound barriers will be installed along the east, south, and west perimeter of the roof to attenuate noise. This rooftop amenity will be available via key entry to people staying at the hotel and their guests and will not be open to the public. As part of the hotel's normal operations, guests will be permitted to consume alcohol on the rooftop that is purchased at the bar downstairs or through room service, and there will not be a permanent bar established or set up on the rooftop. The rooftop deck can also be booked for private gatherings and events that may use a temporary rollout bar for alcohol sales and services only during the event. The third component of the renovation includes minor alterations to other exteriors of the building, including new steps and railing at the entry to the hotel for the relocated main entrance and the adjacent exit door, the demolition of nonhistoric glass screens adjacent to the entry, a planted green roof above the entrance of the hotel, and painted mechanical screens at the basement levels towards the rear of the building. So on June 16, 2025, an appeal was filed with the city clerk by United Here Local 11, which asserted that the Planning Commission's adoption of a categorical exemption under CEQA and approval of the project was based on technical errors, errors of fact, and inaccurate or unsupported findings. The appeal contains 20 assertions that are addressed in detail in the staff report, but they pertain to three primary assertions. That first, the project does not qualify for a categorical exemption under CEQA due to unusual circumstances regarding public rooftop uses that serve alcohol, and the piecemeal review of projects at this hotel that will have cumulative and significant noise and traffic impacts. Second, the noise and parking demand studies that were conducted are inadequate under CEQA and do not comply with the noise and zoning ordinances. And third, the required findings cannot be made to grant a conditional use permit amendment due to the identified noise and parking issues. The first assertion that historic uses on the Sunset Strip where outdoor areas serving alcohol to non-hotel guests cause excessive noise may constitute an unusual circumstance exception to categorical exemptions under CEQA is incorrect. Amenity spaces in hotels that are open to the public, such as restaurants, bars, and lounges with outdoor seating areas that serve alcohol, are common features of full-service hotels and not unique to the Sunset Strip to be considered an unusual circumstance. Additionally, the statement that the general public would utilize the proposed rooftop deck is incorrect because this amenity, as I described, would be accessible only to hotel guests through key entry and to guests of private booked events. To ensure that the project will not cause significant environmental impacts, the use of the rooftop deck is subject to conditions of approval requiring strict compliance with the noise ordinance. So that nearby residences are not negatively impacted. The project is also required to be reviewed by the Planning Commission every three months after the use is established during the first year. There is also no evidence to support the suggestion that segregating the project that was approved in 2024, which increased the interior area where alcohol can be served, from the proposed project that increases the outdoor area where alcohol can be served, is potentially considered improper piecemeal review under CEQA. The current project was not anticipated at the time the 2024 project was approved, and the new rooftop garden and landscape deck fulfills a separate need and is not dependent upon the project that was approved in 2024. Additionally, the noise study conducted for the proposed project considered all noise sources in its analysis, demonstrating that the operation of the roof deck would not violate city noise regulations when combined with noise from the existing pool deck. The proposed expansion of hotel, I'm sorry, the proposed expansion of alcohol service at the hotel has not been shown to result in any significant environmental impacts, and substantial evidence in the noise study supports that conclusion. Thus, there is no evidence to support the assertion that outdoor uses which serve alcohol to the public on the Sunset Strip constitutes an unusual circumstance, or that piecemealing under CEQA occurred that results in significant cumulative impacts. The second assertion that the noise and parking demand studies conducted for the project are inadequate under CEQA and do not comply with the noise and zoning ordinances is also incorrect and unsupported by sufficient evidence. The noise study and traffic analysis were prepared to help the applicant design a project that would comply with the zoning and noise ordinances and to support the findings needed to grant the CUP amendment. These studies were not conducted as part of any analysis that is required by CEQA because the project is appropriately categorically exempt. The appeal raises a multitude of technical topics such as sound level thresholds, noise reduction measures, maximum occupancy, speech levels, low frequency noise, and cumulative noise from other establishments, as well as assumptions about the characterization of conditions of approval as mitigation measures, enforcement of the noise ordinance, and recommendations in a past noise study for a zoning text amendment that was studied in 2023. Staff reviewed all of these topics and concluded that the conducted studies were adequate to demonstrate that the project would comply with the noise and zoning ordinances. These studies support. These studies do support the findings needed to grant the CUP amendment and that these assertions are either entirely speculative or not supported by valid evidence. In response to the third assertion that the necessary findings to grant the CUP amendment cannot be made, staff has evaluated the appellant's claims that noise and traffic impacts were not adequately studied. And through the responses presented in the staff report and summarized before you, staff has determined that the project, number one, complies with the zoning ordinance, number two, has been designed and is conditioned to properly address noise and traffic impacts, and is consistent with the general plan, safety and noise element, and Sunset specific plan. Number three, the project provides more than the required number of parking spaces under the zoning ordinance and will not be operated to accommodate the additional parking demand. Number four, will be operated in compliance with the noise ordinance to be compatible with nearby residential properties on De Longprey and Sweetsr Avenues. And five, the project will be operated as conditioned to not impact the health and general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity of the hotel. In conclusion, staff has reviewed and responded to all the assertions presented in the appeal and finds that the appellant has not provided valid new evidence or documentation of technical errors, errors of fact, or identified inaccurate and unsupported findings to substantiate the basis for the appeal. The proposed renovation of the existing hotel to add a new rooftop deck, construct minor exterior alterations, and increase the outdoor area where the accessory sales, service, and consumption of alcohol is permitted will complement similar uses along Sunset Boulevard, including the many restaurants and hotels that contribute to the character of the Sunset Strip. The new rooftop deck is a minor expansion that, as conditioned, will preserve the property's historic integrity, reestablish a compatible neighborhood use that began operating nearly 30 years ago, and support the successful operation of the hotel. The project aligns with the objective standards of the zoning ordinance and the intent of the general plan, and is supported by the Historic Preservation and Planning Commissions. The minor expansion of the hotel and renovation of this designated cultural resource is not subject to any exceptions and is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and will not have a significant effect on the environment. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the resolution denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's adoption of the categorical exemption and approval of the hotel renovation project at 8300 Sunset Boulevard. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Do my colleagues have any questions for staff at this time? No?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Heng.
I had a couple of questions for the city attorney, if possible. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Can you please explain what our role is as a city council when we hear an appeal of the Planning Commission?
Yes, the council is reviewing for errors the decision of the Planning Commission. Under the city code, appeals are based, and as Doug mentioned, appeals should be based on error of fact, dispute of findings, or inadequacy of conditions, things of that nature if there was a defect or a problem with the Planning Commission's assessment of the project. And so you're looking to see whether the allegations in the appeal are supported by evidence.
And then, what standard are we required to apply when reviewing an appeal?
Well, the general standard for land use decisions is substantial evidence. You need substantial evidence in the record to support the decision that you're making, that the findings can be made to approve the project, that the conditions are appropriate, or conversely, that there was something missing in the Planning Commission decision, and there's a basis to find that.
And just in general, if members of the community are strongly opposed to any particular project, can the City Council just, can the City Council deny the project based solely on those concerns?
Just being concerned with a project? And I think that goes back to what I was just saying, that land use decisions need to be based on the evidence in the record. What do the studies show? What do the facts show? What is the information before the council that you're basing your decision on? So general speculation, concern, worry about what a project might do isn't substantial evidence. Studies, data, information, code compliance, those are things that are the evidence you're looking at in a decision.
Understood, thank you. And does the applicant or the city basically have to prove their claims or evidence? And was the threshold met?
The appellant is the one that brings the appeal, and they're the ones that raise the allegations that there's some defect with the Planning Commission's decision. And staff assesses them and provides you the information for you to make the determination on whether or not there were any errors in the Planning Commission decision. I think we still have more information to hear from all the different parties before assessing it all, but based on what staff has presented in the staff report, staff's recommendation at this time is to deny the appeal.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions from the council? Okay. The city clerk has informed me that Jordan, our assistant, will speak on behalf of the appellant, or the appellant, I'm sorry, and address the City Council. Jordan, you'll have a maximum of five minutes to make your presentation.
And Mayor, just to clarify, the appellant team has added another member, Juan Munoz, to speak with them.
Well, welcome up to the microphone, Juan Munoz. There are two microphones, if it helps you too, Juan. You can, no, okay, great. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Honorable Council. My name is Jordan Sisson, I'm the Land Use Council to Local 11. But I would like my client to introduce himself and to.
Juan Munoz Guevara, political coordinator with United Here Local 11, the Hospitality Workers Union.
So I'm gonna handle this in two parts. One, some clarifications in response to the applicant's response to our appeal, and the second, highlight the mitigation and conditions that are being left off the table. First, from a clarification, we are very clearly asking you pursuant to section 19.7640 to grant the appeal. That is your authority in this appeal action. First point of clarification regarding the Class 31 exemption that's about historic resources, our appeal is not stopping historic resource. So that is a red herring, that is not part of this appeal. Nothing in our appeal stops historic preservation. Two, in terms of the deference granted by the court to city actions, that includes the city's final action. The City Council is the final arbiter. You have the authority, as clearly was shown at the last meeting, that you may disagree with staff. And we have tremendous amount of respect for staff. That being said, you are the final arbiter. You may disagree if there's substantial evidence. Three, regarding substantial evidence, which is the standard, while speculation is not substantial evidence, facts, reasonable assumptions, site-specific facts, and your own lived personal experience on relevant issues is substantial evidence. You're the elected officials that know your city better than courts. You know the experience of rooftop noises, experience with code enforcement. These are relevant issues that you can rely upon with your individual expertise. In terms of the Class 1, as you heard, a central assumption is that this is a minor expansion of an existing use. That's the Class 1 exemption. Respectfully, there is no vested right to any rooftop uses, much less a 14,000-square-foot expansion, much less almost 9,000 square feet of additional alcohol-related uses up on the rooftop where there's no existing uses. You can rely on your own personal experience, including your experience just last year. In November of last year, this body opined on the issue of rooftop uses, alcohol uses at hotels, and made an important distinction between courtyards and interior spaces versus rooftop areas, areas that are exposed and open to the public. That is a distinction that this body made back in November. You can rely on that personal experience. In terms of the categorical exemption, cumulative impacts is a legitimate exception. Here, this is not speculation, we're not citing to random projects. There is at least several CUP alcohol-related amendments in the 90s, in the aughts, last year, and now. These are successive projects of the same type in the same place, based on facts. Furthermore, the code enforcement issues with immediate prior use and prior operator, the Standard Hotel, is relevant fact-specific factors for this body to consider. When noise or an outdoor use was limited to only the outdoor pool, that was an issue. That's something you can rely upon. Furthermore, some fundamental assumptions about this project is that there will be no public access from the public, just hotel guests and hotel patrons. Last year, this body even opined on this issue, the difficulty of enforcing those type of conditions. That's a fundamental assumption about code enforcement and the conditions as part of this project approval. My last minute, I just wanted to communicate yet again, we're asking to grant the appeal. But that being said, you do have the authority to add conditions. In fact, that's subsection 2 of Code Section 197640. You're allowed, in response to the appeal, include additional conditions. Here, you've got three major lawn areas, a central, an east, and a west lawn. There are conditions of approval that can be amended to address those noise impacts, such as condition 2.1, limit alcohol and outdoor use till 8:00 PM and to 200 persons. Add a new condition 4.3 that maximizes landscape. That includes trees of at least 24-inch box sizes around the perimeter. Maximize green walls along vertical surfaces such as the noise mechanical screening. And also, to break up the assembly areas, have 24-inch box mature trees at least 12 feet apart in those assembly areas. Additionally, no implied music after 8:00 PM, as a condition 5.2. Condition 5.3, ensure all hotel guests are actually at hotel guests, have someone manually there, and to ensure that after 8:00 PM, these are hotel guests. A key entry is very easy to circumvent. There's additional conditions such as monitoring and making sure that the sound limits are have limiters and other conditions that was expressed. Thank you so much for your time. Happy to answer any questions for clarifications afterwards.
Thank you, very much appreciated. So the city clerk has informed me that Andrew Brady will present for the applicant team. You'll have a maximum of five minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Member, members of the council, Andrew Brady of DLA Piper on behalf of the project applicant. So as, I'm glad Councilmember Heng asked the question about what we're here for tonight, because what we're here for is addressing technical issues, claims under the California Environmental Quality Act, one of the driest and most technical things we can ask you to consider and look at. And there's very specific arguments being made here, and there's a specific legal standard that applies, as everyone's agreed to, even the appellant agreed, that substantial evidence is what applies here. And substantial evidence on the question of highly technical issues such as noise impacts, and though they weren't discussed, traffic impacts is also discussed in the appeal, you need expert opinion to substantiate those. And one of the other things that was not mentioned is that under the substantial evidence test, this council gets to select, if there's a dispute among experts, this council gets to select which expert to choose. However, in this case, there's only one set of expert opinions that both support the conclusion that the noise impacts have been appropriately dealt with by conditions of approval and by technical analysis conducted by experts, and staff is enforced, is empowered under CEQA to make, also have technical expertise on these issues. And on the facts, on the technical documentation that's in the record, it is solely and entirely on the side of this project. Here, the appellant produced zero technical evidence. And up here, it was a fact-free presentation asking you to rely on something other than the evidence in this case, because they've put forth no evidence in support of this appeal. And on that basis alone, under the substantial evidence test, that results in, actually fully supports staff's recommendation here. And staff did a tremendous job on this project, they held our feet to the fire at every turn, they did a great job, and we fully concur with their conclusion here. You know, one of the other things that was discussed is cumulative impacts. Again, no evidence, zero evidence put forth together. To cumulative impacts requires a technical analysis demonstrating that combined impacts of different uses result in a significant impact under the city's standards. No evidence whatsoever, just a bald assertion that this occurred. That does not meet the substantial evidence standard of review. And again, as mentioned by the city attorney, it's the appellant's burden here to ultimately establish that there was an error on the part of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission unanimously approved this project, and before that, the Historic Preservation Commission unanimously voted to recommend the adoption of the certificate of appropriateness for this project. The operations of a former operator, not substantial evidence about what this hotel is going to be. It's a different operator, it's a different time, it's a different business plan, and it is definitively not the business plan of this operation, as we've made clear working with staff over the last year plus. And finally, the appellant here raised a litany of new proposed conditions that we've never heard before. This is the first time these issues were raised. This appeal was filed months ago, and to show up here at the hearing today and sort of suggest a bunch of brand-new conditions that neither staff or the applicant here has had an opportunity to vet, we would reject that. In fact, you know, this is a case where, you know, because this is a technical, this is a technical appeal under the California Environmental Quality Act, what staff's, what you're ultimately looking for is have you achieved compliance with the code, particularly with the noise issues? And in this case, compliance with the code has been achieved. Additional quote-unquote mitigation is not required. Mitigation is only required when you've demonstrated that there's a significant impact in the first place. Again, zero substantial evidence in the record put in place by this appellant to demonstrate that those impacts occur. Again, all of the evidence, multiple technical reports, and technical, not only initial technical reports showing less than significant noise impacts, a technical response from the expert noise consultant responding to each and refuting each point raised in the appeal, points that were not raised by a noise engineer, not raised by an expert, raised by an attorney. And as much as it pains me to admit, attorneys are not experts in everything, certainly not noise engineering. So we think that the Planning Commission was correct in unanimously approving this project. We think the staff is 100% correct in their recommendation to deny this appeal, and we recommend the same, that the appeal be denied. Here tonight, we do, we have, we do have our, the expert consultants who prepared these reports on the noise and transportation issues, we have our project architect. So if there are any technical questions here, we're happy to answer them, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will now receive comment from anyone in the room who wishes to speak on this matter. Each person who addresses the City Council has two minutes, and if you haven't already, please submit your speaker slip, I'll start calling names up. I see Jimmy Totoro, Stephanie Harker, and then Kathy Blavas. Please come to the microphone and speak. Is Jimmy not here anymore? Okay, Stephanie Harker, followed by Kathy Blavas, followed by Tasha L.
Good evening, council, mayor, vice mayor, and councilmembers. Stephanie Harker, City of West Hollywood. As many of you know, I have a soft spot in my heart and I'm advocate for all historic projects. And this project on Sunset is going to be a wonderful, wonderful restoration of a very prominent hotel, and we all know that Sunset needs livening up. I am writing, or I'm here to support staff's recommendation to deny the appeal being brought against the restoration of the Standard Hotel. I somewhat question the motives of United Here Local 11 in filing this appeal, and I urge the council to deny the appeal and let the important project proceed as planned. Thank you.
Kathy, thank you. Kathy Blavas, followed by Tasha L., and then I have Savannah Fox next.
Hi, good evening, Kathy Blavas, City of West Hollywood. I too am in support of the staff's recommendation. To me, the appeal brought forward tonight strikes me as disingenuous, that the same union frequently mobilizes members to advocate for housing developments, many of which raise legitimate concerns about traffic and noise, scale enassing, yet now seeks to block a thoughtful restoration project. We all recognize that Sunset Boulevard is in urgent need of revitalization. Housing is not the answer for this. Hotels. Hotels, recreation spaces, and entertainment that align with Sunset's historic identity and economic role. I've already stated at both the HPC and Planning Commission meetings, my full support for the Ian Schreger Hotel Group's restoration of an important historic property. I urge council to uphold staff recommendation and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Tasha L., followed by Savannah Fox, followed by Jeff Vance.
Hello, good evening, thank you. I'm Tasha L. I am the, I've lived in this neighborhood with this, where this project is for about 25 years now. And mostly what I want to do is enter into the public record a comment that is not directly related to the appeal, but is related to the project itself. And my question is, is there a plan in the process to remove any of the trees from the south side of the building to increase visibility for the rooftop deck? There's trees, both city trees along the street and trees on the property, many of which are taller than the building and could theoretically obstruct views if that's what they're trying to achieve. Those trees, A, mitigate sound beautifully, provide wonderful shade for all of us who are walk in that area, and we already have trees that are coming out of the dog park, literally next door to this, next year. So that's my biggest concern, and I just wanted to enter into the public record how important that is for that neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Savannah Fox, followed by Jeff Vance, and then Roberto M.
Hello, my name is Savannah Fox, and I'm speaking as an employee of ID Group, a design firm located directly across the street from the hotel project. I feel there are many reasons to support this project, including that this project is committed to preserving and rehabilitating a piece of West Hollywood's history. Rather than demolishing the existing historically significant Sunset Strip building, the proposal thoughtfully integrates it into a new design. Additionally, the project promotes economic revitalization and cultural vitality at a critical time for the Sunset Strip and our city as a whole. My team and I have personally connected with the public hotel team, and they are genuinely interested in considering the needs of our Sunset Boulevard neighborhood and the plans for this hotel, and we support that this project is approved to move forward. So I urge you to deny the appeal against the project, as this is a project that our neighborhood and greater community wants to see come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Vance, followed by Roberto M., followed by Eli Quinones.
Jeff Vance, I'm office space.
Hold the mic up a little bit, thank you.
I've office directly across the street from the proposed hotel improvements for 20 years. I live, my office is 8335, and I live beyond that, and I think it's fantastic what they're doing. We really need it in that area, and I think their consideration to how to adapt to the Sunset Strip is perfect for the directions that we're going now. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberto M., followed by Eli Quinones.
Good evening. My name is Eli Quinones, and I work at the former Standard Hotel, bartender for seven years. The parking is another major issue. This hotel has only 139 parking space, but the rooftop, the nightclub, the bar, and the pool will all bring far more people than that. The development assumes only the guests will use this area, but we know for experience that bar and nightclub and the Sunset Strip attract large crowd from outside. We can expect, but their own study showed that roof alone could bring 80 cars, and that does not even count nightclubs, the pool deck, or other public area. This will create more traffic and make parking worse nearby the neighborhood. The city needs a realistic plan to handle parking and traffic before approving this project. Please uphold the appeal so that this issue can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, that was Eli Quinones. Is, yes, okay, thank you. Is Roberto M. in the room? Okay, terrific.
Good evening, council, my name is Roberto Masariegos. I'll be reading transcendent Sergio Lopez.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sergio Lopez, and I work at the former Standard Hotel as a cook for five years. I urge to uphold Unite Here Local 11's appeal. The council should take the noise issue seriously. This hotel sits right next to the apartment buildings, and the noise study done by that developer just doesn't reflect reality. It assumes people's voices and musics will stay very quiet, but we all know that crowds, alcohol, and rooftop parties make people much louder. The study doesn't consider bass-heavy music, sound bouncing off the pool, or late-night activity. Without an honest study, there are no real protections for residents or workers. We are the ones that would have to be there all the time. We need a proper noise study and a real solution before this project moves forward. Please uphold the appeal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I know we have one public speaker in Zoom as well. We'll go there. If there's anyone else, now is your time to tell us. Our speaker in Zoom is Jen Amiev-Moral. Jen, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. Jen Amiev-Moral, president and CEO of West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and executive director for the Sunset Strip Business Improvement District. It's such an amazing opportunity for us. The opening of the hotel at 8300 Sunset is essential to the survival of the east end of the strip and is long overdue. The old Standard Hotel once anchored the east end of the strip, bringing in hotel guests who supported nearby businesses. And since it's closed, we've been, we've seen venues like Pintaco and The Den struggle and close, leaving a gap in the area's vitality. The modest renovations being proposed, including the rooftop garden and deck, are exactly what the property needs. Approving the certificate of appropriateness will allow these improvements while keeping the venue's character intact. Likewise, the request for a minor conditional use permit amendment to expand the outdoor area for accessory sales, service, and alcohol consumption does not change the nature of the hotel. It simply enhances the guest experience, creates jobs, and strengthens our business community. This appeal is not about historic preservation, it's about obstruction and is, at best, disingenuous at best, and is a red herring. The project preserves the essence of the property while ensuring economic growth, and with Ian Schreger's proven vision and track record in West Hollywood, the hotel will be a tremendous asset to our city. I respectfully urge you to approve both the certificate of appropriateness and the CUP amendment, so we can bring this hotel back to life and revitalize the Sunset Strip. Lastly, I hope you support not apply additional, I hope you do not apply additional conditions. This is a hotel. It needs the flexibility to be a thriving business. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And then I understand we have some citizen position slips as well?
Yes, mayor, we do. Suzanne Miller and Mikey Friedman both submitted citizen position slips in support of staff's recommendation to deny the appeal.
Thank you very much. At this time, would the appellant wish to make any further comments? You'll have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, Jordan Sisson for appellate's response. First and foremost, again, we are not challenging the certificate of appropriateness. It's a false narrative to say that you can grant, you can't grant the appeal because it stops historic preservation. The appeal has nothing to do with that. It's about the rooftop uses. We are not the ones that propose to expand a rooftop use. That was the applicant. The applicant has already expanded the interior area, and there is no vested right to the rooftop uses, much less 14,000 square feet, as well as roughly 9,000 square feet of alcohol use. Again, no vested right to that. That was the applicant, not the appellant. Second point, in terms of the conditions, many of the conditions that we discussed were in the appeal, talking about noise limiters, bandwidth limiters, having active noise monitoring. Much of this was already included in our appeal, so to say that these are brand-new spur-of-the-moment, maybe not the most genuine comment or response. In terms of the noise study, there are fundamental assumptions that this body can opine on with your own personal experience. Is it realistic that 56 dBA for 399 persons at 10:00 p.m. based off of your personal experience with rooftop noises? Is that realistic? Has your firsthand experience with noise enforcement been timely? Has that been your experience? You can rely on that substantial evidence. In terms of their response to low-frequency noise, again, downstairs is a nightclub. We presented multiple evidence of other Schreger-type events that have rooftop uses. Base thumping noise is a common low frequency that has impacts. Their argument in the staff report was, the code does not require it, so we don't need to look at it. That is not, that does not line up with the personal experience of this body and what happens with low frequency. That should be addressed in a specific condition of approval. And furthermore, whether you want to call it mitigation or condition of approval, this body has the authority, if there is a nexus and substantial evidence, to require conditions of approval that address the findings. Here, reasonable time and place restrictions and other operational changes, as well as physical improvements to address the noise issues is within your purview. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Does the applicant's representative wish to make any further comments? Thanks, Andrew, you'll have two minutes as well.
Thank you, Andrew Brady, again, on behalf of the project applicant. First, you know, again, this is a technical, beware the appellant who asks you to rely on feelings and not facts. This is a substantial evidence case where the facts are what matter, and the technical analysis in the record amply demonstrates that the analysis was conducted, and based on that analysis, this project can and will comply with the city's noise ordinances. And keep in mind, as well as staff mentioned in the beginning, that this project is subject to CEQA exemptions. This is not a ground-up construction. This is a renovation of an existing building and the preservation of a historic building, an historic gem in the city. The state has already ruled that projects that renovate existing buildings and renovate historic buildings don't have significant impacts, like a ground-up construction would. That's the presumption that we're relying on. It's the appellant's job to rebut that presumption. They've entirely failed to do so. Again, the discussion about low-frequency noise, there's a sleight of hand that occurred there, right? They said, oh, well, there's this old nightclub use downstairs. A use that's A, not continuing, and B, nothing to do with the approval before this council tonight. So they're asking you to rule on something that's entirely outside of the record, and again, for which they're asking you to speculate, because they haven't met their burden of producing evidence to support the appeal that they're making here. And again, you know, there were some conditions of approval mentioned in the, in the appeal itself. There was a different set of conditions of approval that were listed in the initial presentation. That's what we're reacting to. Conditions suggested that would significantly hamper operations mentioned at the 11th hour at this hearing, not vetted with staff and not vetted with us beforehand. Again, the conditions adopted appropriately address noise, appropriately address parking issues, you know, they did sort of take the opportunity to use their public comments to raise additional issues. Parking is fully dealt with. We do have LAZ Parking here, who's the operator, who's an experienced operator, who has a plan for every contingency that might come up. So if there's any questions about that, we're happy to answer them. Again, this is a baseless appeal, totally meritless. Nothing in the rebuttal addressed any evidence that wasn't addressed before, so we request it be denied.
Thank you.
No trees will be taken out.
Thank you for answering that. Okay, I will now close the public testimony portion of the public hearing, and we will move to council deliberations. Who would like to begin?
I have a question for the appellant's attorney.
Okay, and vice mayor. Okay, there's a couple of questions.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Great. I have a question for the appellant's attorney. Thank you for.
Councilmember.
Thank you. My understanding is that you're, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I want to make sure I read the staff report correct. You're not against the standard reopening or the modernization of a historic hotel, right?
Absolutely correct. We are not objecting to the historic renovation or the, again, the Class 31 for that component of this project, which is the renovation. You heard a lot of great things about the historic preservation, interior changes to bring it back to life. We are not challenging that, and our appeal does not challenge that.
Great. You're simply asking for a better noise study and a parking study, essentially, that, because you believe that the two that are in the record don't, you find errors in them, to say the least.
We believe that there's substantial evidence that fact specifics to this site has not been addressed in their parking study. Moreover, in terms of the noise impacts, we believe that there is fact-specific, site-specific factors that have not been addressed and/or assumed in the noise study. And again, whether it's part of a proper CEQA analysis, which we believe an MND would be appropriate, and you can tether your noise analysis and your conditions to that, or through your land use authority exercising your police powers to put in reasonable conditions where there is a nexus to this completely brand-new use. There is no existing rooftop use. There's no alcohol use up there. And so that is a central theme and a central core issue of this appeal.
Thank you. I have a question for the Standard's lawyers and or teens, applicants, sorry. Now, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to remember the correct language. Thank you very much. So, and perhaps maybe it might be someone from the Standard that would want to answer this question. What? I'm sorry, 8300 Sunset Boulevard, formerly known as the Standard. I can't remember the new name. The Public Hotel.
Yeah, it's a different operator, that was Andre Bilage.
Wonderful, okay, sorry. Whatever forthcoming name, which I'm sure will be great. I just wanted to bring up something, and I believe it, I hope it's working, but, or you're working towards it, that you know, the operators of the hotel know that we have a law on the books that require them, require the hotel to rehire all the people that were fought, laid off when the former name of said hotel happened?
This hotel will comply with all applicable laws.
Great. And is that happening and in process right now? Because it sounds like you're going to be opening, hopefully, one day? In a year?
Yeah, a little less than a year, but.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that that conversation was occurring.
We're a little ways away from hiring decisions, but.
No worries. I just wanted to make sure that that was occurring, because I know this was many years ago a very big topic of conversation. So thank you for answering that question.
Of course.
Vice Mayor Heilman, I know you had questions for staff?
Just two quick questions. Just to clarify, and I didn't see it in the plans, there are no plans to remove trees on the south side of the hotel, correct?
That is correct. There are no plans to remove trees on the south side of the hotel. The only landscaping that will occur would be around the vicinity of the actual building.
My other question is, the appellant here did not submit a traffic study or a parking study or a noise study, correct?
That is correct. The appellant did not submit their own parking study or noise study.
Thank you.
Questions or councilmember Heng, sorry.
Thank you, mayor. I have another question for the city attorney or staff. Is it the council's role to relitigate what the planning commission had already adjudicated?
Well, the planning commission held a thorough public hearing, made a decision, and you're reviewing it, based on the issues that the appellant has raised to see if there were defects in that decision. So the noise, the issues that are being raised in the appeal, that's what you're looking at.
So based on the staff report and what we've heard tonight, if the evidence shows that the planning commission's decision was supported and all findings were properly made, like with a lack of deficiencies or no deficiencies, are we obligated to then deny the appeal?
If this body does not find deficiencies in the planning commission's decision or problems with the evidence, then the action would be to deny the appeal.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meister.
Thank you, Mayor. So you have a condition that there will be a review at three months, six months? Six months, nine months, 12 months?
Three, six, and nine months following the activation of the roof deck within the first year.
So if there... If the city does receive complaints about noise on the rooftop, the city will... The city planning commission will review...
Yes, that's the exact purpose of that condition, yes.
And if the conditions aren't found to be adequate, then they have the power to change those conditions, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Heilman. Yeah, I think we're getting there, yeah.
Okay. Well, I...
You take us there.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out and speaking. This is an existing property that was operated as a hotel for many years. Our Historic Preservation Commission unanimously recommended approval. The planning commission also unanimously approved this project. I don't think there were even any objections to this project when it came before the planning commission. So the appellants here, I think, face a particularly difficult burden, given the fact that they didn't raise any objections when it was before the planning commission. This property operated successfully as the Standard Hotel for many years. Returning the property to its prior use doesn't seem to raise any significant issues for me. I don't think it raises any environmental concerns. I know that the operator of... Or Ian Schrager, who is proposing this, he did a great job with the Edition Hotel. Even though I objected to the exterior, I think it is a beautiful hotel inside, and I'm confident that they will do the same with this property. When I look over the record, there was substantial evidence to support the CEQA exemption that staff referenced. By contrast, the appellate has not submitted substantial evidence, but merely speculation. The constant reference to our own personal experience is simply a recognition that the appellate did not submit any evidence, no parking study, no noise study, to counter what staff relied on. The appellate tried to poke holes in the noise study that the staff relied on, but they didn't submit their own noise study. That tells me that there is not substantial evidence to support the appeal. Allowing the existing rooftop to be an amenity for the guests seems like a reasonable request on the part of the hotelier, and I think it is also essential to make the property financially viable. The objections regarding the parking don't seem to be supported by any substantial evidence. Staff utilized the appropriate standards for determining the parking demand. And again, this is an existing hotel that is being returned to its former use. And I do want to also note that tonight there are no residents who are directly around the hotel who are objecting, and the appellate has supported ground-up construction that will have far more impact in terms of parking and noise. So based on that, I cannot support the appeal. I would recommend that we deny the appeal.
Councilmember Meister.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Vice Mayor Heilman. The appellate referred to an item that I actually had brought forward about limiting rooftop uses, but it did not get approved. So it really cannot be used as a reason for accepting an appeal on this project. And I did not see any evidence provided that would make me feel that the planning commission made an error in its findings. So I support staff's recommendations to deny the appeal.
Councilmember Hang.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and providing your input to this very important process. Tonight, we are reviewing an appeal of a planning commission decision, and we have carefully reviewed the appellate's assertions. The city must make its decisions based on substantial evidence, and as an appeal body, we reviewed the commission's decision to see if there was any error or deficiencies. I've read the staff report and now listened to all the public testimony, and I do not see evidence in the record that would legally warrant granting the appeal. To the contrary, the planning commission's decision was thoughtful and detailed. And the record we forged tonight contains detailed evidence to address each allegation in the appeal and the findings to approve the project. In this role, I must make decisions based on the evidence, and while I understand there may be concern about the project, that does not rise to the level of evidence needed to grant the appeal and reverse the planning commission's decision. While I sympathize, I feel my hands are tied here. All of the appeal allegations have been addressed, and there is no basis that I have seen to overturn the planning commission's decision or impose requirements for further study. To the applicant, please know that I think this is vital, that workers in our city are protected and represented. While I'm going to vote to deny the appeal, it is my strong desire to see you meet with the appellate in the hopes that you can work collaboratively to uplift your business, the Sunset Strip, the City of West Hollywood, and the workers who make that all possible in this city. While my role tonight is not necessarily to weigh the benefits of the project, the planning commission already did that. The reality is that the Sunset Strip is struggling, and this will bring needed revitalization to our Sunset Strip. The expansion is limited and properly conditioned to address any and all concerns. The conditions have approved address, access, noise, and other issues raised in the appeal, and we are not able to impose conditions without any evidentiary basis. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hang. I want to... I'm going to jump in. Oh.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Madam City Attorney, we could add new conditions if there was the will of the council, couldn't we, to their CUPs?
You could, but the same rules apply for all conditions of approval. There has to be evidence of impacts, and then it has to be... The condition has to have a nexus to the impact and be roughly proportionate to address that impact.
So I'm looking at some of the things that the appellate said, specifically around sound and noise mitigation. We did get a few public comments about it, but... So for example, if we wanted to look at the different CUPs regarding amplified sound from, let's say, 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., Monday through Sunday, you're saying that we couldn't do that right now? I'm like looking at condition 5.2. And obviously, this is all concurrent on my colleagues wanting... So maybe before you start opening your magic binder, because I know you have all of your stuff, are there... To address noise concerns, do we want to look at the different CUP for making it 10:00 p.m. versus 8:00 p.m. for residents or anything like that? Or is there not a... I can just stop now and not go forward?
I just think that because they have a three-month, six-month, and nine-month review, the planning commission will be looking at that specifically, right? Noise and all of these other issues. And if residents complain at that point, I think that would be the appropriate time for the conditions to be changed.
Okay. My one thing about the alcohol on the roof, and maybe Councilmember Meister, if I can ask you to evoke Gene Doverin for me for a second. The... People laughed, right? Yeah, Stephanie gets it, right? The use runs with the land, or you know what she always used to say? Thank you. I have it burned in my ear from when she came to planning. I still am like looking at her where she is, but with alcohol not being on the roof ever, is that something that we should statistically address here? Or is that...
I think it's about the evidence. So I think that if there's a problem with that condition, that will come up at the three-month mark.
Okay, and...
Or six months or nine months.
Can I ask a... Oh, I see you jumping. Go ahead.
I was just going to respond to Councilmember Erickson. I think we'd have a concern about equity since there are lots of other hotels on Sunset that do have alcohol service on the roof, including the Andaz, the London, the One Hotel. So I... And yes, and the Viper Room project, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Sure. Can I ask a question to staff about what tools we use to track the metrics that would be considered as part of planning commission's review? Because if it's solely neighborhood complaints, which I know we do get a fair share of for any reason, is that the sole metric that we would respond to?
Yes, the city would basically operate on a complaint basis. I think that the Code Enforcement Division has expressed in the past that when it does receive a call regarding noise, you know, they do not go out there with equipment or sound limiters. I mean, the noise ordinance is very, very simple and basic to sort of enforce, and that... And basically, it states that if noise is audible, plainly audible, then it is a violation of the noise ordinance. So if a code enforcement officer goes out to a property that has placed a complaint, and the code enforcement officer, you know, can hear that, you know, there is noise emanating from the roof deck or some other source, that in and of itself is a violation of the noise ordinance and would need to be corrected.
And because it would be a complaint feedback, the neighbor would complain, it would come to planning commission later, the corrective mechanism would be limiting their hours, putting up new sound barriers. I want to make sure that we're addressing the concerns that are raised in a way, and it doesn't seem like there's an appetite to put stronger conditions up front, but I want to try to understand what a review could look like and how we ensure that we're using that review timeline as effectively as possible and not just solely relying on neighborhood complaints.
So typically, when a project, you know, does come to review to the planning commission, which is, you know, often done when conditional use permits are granted, one of the things that staff will do is staff will check with the code enforcement division to determine, you know, whether or not complaints have been filed and the extent of those complaints. And that would be reported to the planning commission. So, you know, if it considers whether or not additional conditions or modifications to existing ones, you know, would be necessary, that would be taken into consideration.
Okay. I appreciate the sort of concern around equity across the hotels on the Sunset Strip, regarding alcohol sales and timelines. Similarly, the timing of music and amplified sound, I think, makes sense. There's one condition that seems unique to the circumstance, and maybe it's similar across other hotels, but we've had a conversation recently about public access to residential hotels. My understanding is that the public has some access to some of the public's... Or the spaces at hotels, but in this case, it doesn't seem to be so. And my understanding is that there is a limit on the amount of people that can be on the roof at one time, but that is a piece of the constraint that I'm not sure how we would measure for or really test. And we've talked about as a council already in the context of the residential hotel use by the public, that, you know, it was already sort of happening in some ways. And so if that's a condition that we're placing, I want to know what it means to ensure that that's happening, or I want to think differently about that, because it wouldn't make sense to try to enforce something that we can't actually enforce or that isn't being tracked in a proper way.
So the condition or the ability for members of the public to patronize, you know, restaurants and bars of hotels, I mean, that would be the same for this existing hotel as well. You know, you... And the applicant can confirm this, but I believe that you do not have to be a hotel guest to dine at the restaurant or, you know, have a cocktail at the bar inside the hotel. What members of the public cannot do is they would not be able to access this new rooftop deck because only... It's only available through hotel guests and attendance of private events that are booked through the hotel. And that would be done through keyed access or security, so...
The ability for a private event to be hosted that would control who accesses the space makes sense to me. And I understand that we would have different oversight about that because it's done primarily through a special use permit or a special events permit, I'm sorry. The concern I still have is sort of the, you know, matriculation of people through whatever sort of door has a key, and that that wouldn't be upheld. And so some members of the public could gain access because there isn't sort of a way that we're ensuring that's not happening.
So the applicant did agree to a condition that's, you know, that requires keyed access to the rooftop deck, and so that was added to this resolution that's before you. And just so that I can clarify, with regard to special event permits, I should clarify that the hotel would be able to have these private events as part of its normal operations. They would need to obtain a special event permit for that. You know, they would, however, need to obtain a special event permit if they would like to have live music, for instance, at this private event, or if the event, you know, is anticipated to extend beyond the normal operating hours. Then it would be required to apply for and obtain a special event permit, which is, you know, which would be limited to, I believe, 15 per annual calendar year.
Okay, that's really helpful. Thank you. Councilmember Hang.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for staff or the city manager. How many hotels do we have in the city? And of those hotels, how many hotels have rooftops?
We currently have 21 operating hotels, and of those 21, approximately 10 to 12 have activated outdoor spaces, either rooftop or above ground.
And that includes the sale of alcohol, do we know?
Not for all of them. Some of them do, not all of them. They have different types of activation.
Thank you. And then another question for staff. I am a big fan of green space. Have there been any discussions with the operator perhaps to expand the green space on the roof at all? Or that would... That may help mitigate some noise or...
I think that that's... That was something that was suggested, and we are hearing about it for the first time today. But I will say that the actual total area of the rooftop, which includes the landscaping, is over 14,000 square feet. And of that 14,000 square feet, only 9,300 of that would be, you know, accessible to, you know, to occupants, you know, for use. So of that total area, I believe over 5,000 square feet of that is strictly landscaping that would not, you know, be accessible[1679.28] that would not, you know, be accessible to people who use the rooftop deck.
Understood, thank you.
I know you have a motion on the table, I just want to say, I'm hearing from the appellant's, the list of concerns and the sort of types of conditions that we may be able to put in place. It doesn't feel like at this time that route is the right route to go while that list of conditions or, you know, future mitigations exists. It seems that the Planning Commission reaching a 7-0 decision on this item, bringing it back to them on the three-month review and allowing them to be able to figure out what may need to happen should there be violations or concerns, may be the best bet here. I also feel that, you know, our hands are tied on this appeal itself. And while I was interested to think about some of the conditions, I do think the bigger issue of activating Sunset, of equity across the different operators, and the fact that there is a three, you know, three different types of reviews within the first year, so we can really see what it means to have this operator off the ground and running, makes sense to me. I'm sensitive to the concerns of some of the community members, it wasn't very many, but we did get neighbors who were concerned about the impacts, and as somebody who lives right at the base of the addition hotel, I know there are days where it feels like I can hear some of that noise, I also think it's from the London sometimes, but I'm certainly not one to complain about it. And so I think that's where my concern about relying on neighborhood complaints falls a little short of what I believe is possible. So I think this is an area that the city in general needs to think about. Relying on those complaints isn't necessarily the best way to make sure that people's quality of life is maintained well. So I think I can leave the discussion at that, I see we have a motion and a second on the table now.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. My motion would be to deny the appeal and adopt the resolution in the staff report.
It passes for one, noting the no vote of Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you, let me find my place in this agenda again. It's entertainment zones, and then we also have the appointment. So we're moving to item F3, thank you. F3, the West Hollywood Entertainment Zone, and I believe Councilmember Erickson gets to present this item.
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up, sorry. I didn't keep my laptop, I didn't keep the iPad on me.
So close.
I know, I told you 11 o'clock, so I just want to make sure I'm right. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. So I brought forth this item for staff to research and evaluate the creation of an entertainment zone, much like Santa Monica and other cities are looking into, and specifically as we continue to help support businesses in this way. I've talked with the Chamber of Commerce and a number of different businesses about what this would look like or what this would do, but I wanted to make sure that we are performing business owner and community outreach and gathering feedback on best practices because we've seen a success with this. This is tailored to be very specific for how we would or could do it, and this is just giving direction for the city to work, ideally with our Chamber of Commerce and other neighborhood groups like they have in the past, to essentially see if this is feasible and what it would even look like. It is, I think, in essence, a pipe dream in many ways. West Hollywood is not like these other communities, but I would love the opportunity to see when we do shut down the streets and have this large gathering space, what that would look like for an entertainment zone, and specifically with Senate Bill 969, allowing local municipalities and counties to designate these things, entertainment zones. I would like to just see what that would look like for the open consumption on these streets, trees, and sidewalks. So I'm happy to take any questions or go to comments or anything.
We do have one comment in Zoom, so why don't we go there and then we can come back to council and let our Zoom commenter go to bed. Jennifer, you're our next speaker.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and thank you Councilmember Erickson for bringing this forward. Jennifer Moore, President and CEO of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, expressing strong support for the proposed pilot program. You know, I went to, I was telling Councilmember Erickson, I went to a conference years ago that talked about the streets as the venue and really creating an environment within our open areas. And that means looking at exits and egress and emergencies and all that, but at the same time, having a safe and community sort of hub that where people can gather. So it's exciting and a timely idea, and at a moment when many of our hospitality businesses are struggling and need to keep their doors open. We've seen the positive impact of this also in similar of similar efforts in other cities, including Santa Monica, where businesses have reported increased traffic and stronger community engagement. And while West Hollywood might not have an enclosed commonwealth like theirs, I'm confident that our talented city staff can design innovative approaches that reflect our unique culture and nightlife. It's also important that both the Rainbow District and the Sunset Strip be included in this program. The Rainbow District continues to be a vibrant hub of our community, while the Sunset Strip, one of the West Hollywood's most iconic corridors, is in urgent need of revitalization. Entertainment zones could help breathe new life into both the Strip and supporting businesses, workers, and Rainbow District, and the characters that make us world renowned. Pilot represents exactly what West Hollywood does best, leading with creativity, innovation, and bold ideas. And I encourage you to move this program forward and give the businesses the tools they need to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back to council discussion. Are there any comments for Councilmember Erickson on this item? Councilmember Meister?
Yeah, we did get some comments from neighborhood leaders, Jim Banks from Norma Triangle, Elise Eisenberg from the Sunset Heights, WeHo Heights area with concerns because as it is, they have intoxicated people going into their neighborhoods, and that's without having it out on the street. Just this last Saturday night, we had a stabbing on Santa Monica Boulevard, just, what was it, just west of, between somewhere between San Vicente and Robertson. I think that maybe some of these other areas that have entertainment zones have a more defined commercial district, but our residential neighborhoods are just way too close, I think, for this to be, you know, something that I could support. I appreciate, you know, wanting to help our businesses and, you know, bringing it forward, but I have just too many concerns that our neighborhoods will be negatively impacted by it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yeah, I share the concerns, but I'm going to support this item because it is asking our staff to look at it, and I think we should look at it. I think there may be times and places where this can be done without impacting our neighborhoods. If we're having some kind of event, for instance, on Robertson where a portion of the street is closed, in the past, what we would have to do is have a separate area and have a separate ABC permit. I think this would allow the businesses to serve alcohol rather than go through that process. So with the understanding that this isn't something that we should be permitting on a nightly basis, but something that could be permitted in an enclosed area adjacent to our businesses, I'm willing to look at it.
And Mayor, and that was the whole reason, and I share your concerns, especially after the horrific incident that happened on Saturday. We want to make sure we're involving public safety partners, community groups and everything, and specifically with this group, I wanted us to get ahead of the entertainment zone conversation to see if, and I think it is an if, because I even for my own items, but I think in talking with businesses, thought this way. So I understand what you're saying and what Vice Mayor Heilman is saying as well.
Councilmember Hing?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank my colleague for bringing forward this item. I agree with the Vice Mayor that this is a study, but I do believe that this is a great item. Our businesses need help, and we need to do all we can to help our small businesses. We are a city that cares for our small businesses, we offer a concierge service for our small business community, and I think this is a great step forward for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, I very much agree. Excited to bring this forward and see what's possible. Thank you, Councilmember, for your leadership on this item. We have a motion in a second. There we go.
And the motion passes for one, noting the no vote of Councilmember Meister.
Thank you. We'll move to the final item on tonight's agenda, item F7, the designation of voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference.
Thank you, Mayor.
I moved to make John Heilman the delegate for everything.
Mayor, are you going to be there?
I will be there.
I think it's more appropriate that the mayor do it.
We tried.
Happy to.
So the mayor will be the delegate, do we want to also nominate an alternate?
Is this for National?
No, no, no.
It's for the League of Cities.
It's for Cal Cities. Yeah, in Long Beach.
I'll be there.
Okay, so the mayor will be the delegate, and in the off chance she is unable to attend the General Assembly, Councilmember Erickson will take her place.
And for what it's worth, there are no items proposed for the General Assembly, and so something would have to be brought to the General Assembly by petition, so it's unlikely we'll be using our voting power, but honored to serve.
Thank you both, and with that, we have Mayor Byers as our delegate and Councilmember Erickson as our alternate delegate.
Thank you. Okay, I don't, our one excluded consent calendar item was moved to a date uncertain. Do we have any final public comment at this time? We do have one individual who raised his hand to speak.
We actually have 12 people that we pulled from the first public comment period over.
Great.
I'm just going to go through them as I think many of them have left. Michael Seldich. Okay, Jimmy Todorov.
Yeah. Is this, are you Jimmy?
Are you Jimmy? Okay, Jimmy, you waited this whole time, that's wonderful.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Todorov, and I'm
Can you speak a little bit more closely into the microphone?
My name is Jimmy Todorov, and I'm one of the owners of the Almond Eight Association, and also represent the residential community on Almond Drive. And this is regarding the approved noncompliant project about two years ago for a five-story mixed-use commercial residential building, which is currently not compliant, and we have five noncompliant items. The number one is that we don't have privacy. The current proposed building, people will directly look in our bedrooms and bathrooms. Also, this proposed development will increase the traffic on Almond Drive, it's a very small tiny street, because the driveway, it's located on a small residential street towards the big Beverly Boulevard, where it should be on Beverly Boulevard. Also, there is not enough parking space provided, and overflow will park on the streets in front of our residential buildings and houses, and we're not going to be able to park our cars because people are going to be using from the commercial, not enough parking space, they're going to be parking right in front of us. So these are the major issues that we have, and then we were denied our appeal, timely appealed by Jennifer Alcar. This is a appeal for 75 people post-sign, and we were denied, and we're asking the city, I mean, the council members, to give us another chance to be reviewed by third party with people that are competent, and in order to, you know, to avoid potential lawsuit, major lawsuit from the residents.
Thank you.
Because building is not compliant.
Thank you very much.
This proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought I'm going to have two minutes.
I know.
That was two minutes.
That was your two minutes. I know, yeah, it goes fast, no, two minutes, but it goes very fast, we apologize. But thank you, next.
Casper Martin? Okay, no. Stephanie Harker, to be followed by Kathy Blavas.
Good evening again, Stephanie Harker, City of West Hollywood. I have a very serious question. What, I'd like to know what the pieces of misinformation that you continue to say that we're spreading, what they are, because I would like to correct myself. I know you can't respond from the dais, but perhaps you could shoot me an email, because I'm very curious, because all of the facts and figures that we get, we get off of the WeHo, Engage WeHo website. I highly respect the staff, but on the other side of the coin, Councilmember Erickson, just as you wanted to set the record straight about what was said at a previous meeting, I would like to ask you to verify what you said about your constituents on a public Zoom for Streets for All, where you called residents your constituents, bad actors, liars, and Trumpers, and Cities Against Bike Lanes, or MAGA. I don't think those are all true. Respect is a two-way street, John. Perhaps you and I should get on our bicycles and go down that street together again. Thank you. Oh, the good part, I also have a long-range plan I'd like to float. One or all of you could bring forward, bring back the red car or a new light rail, the full length of Route 66. You could become true climate action heroes, providing that service again to our fair city. Thank you.
Kathy Blavas?
Hi, good evening, Kathy Blavas, City of West Hollywood. I too am here to kind of talk about misinformation. It has to do with the scooters. A lot of us who speak against the scooters have the same problem with them as you do. We don't like them being left in the middle of a sidewalk. That's the biggest complaint. And John, at that same Zoom meeting, you talked about your nephew, who was given a scooter for Christmas. I would bet my bottom dollar, your nephew does not leave his scooter in the middle of a sidewalk. I would bet he doesn't have to be traumatized by the idea that we would come and take his scooter away, because I would bet he's a responsible scooter owner, and that's what's missing in our city. It's not the people who own scooters that leave them in the middle of the sidewalk, it's the people who rent scooters. So I'd like to re-mention an idea a while ago. It is not elitist to own your own scooter. The city had a program to give away bikes, why don't you do the same thing with scooters and encourage people to own them so they don't leave them in the middle of the sidewalk? In addition, if you were to go back to having scooters docked, they wouldn't be left in the middle of the sidewalk. So the misinformation, the facts that you missed is, we're not against scooters, we're against irresponsible scooter riders. Also, John, you made reference twice to a homeowner that has two driveways. Why should I be concerned about parking? I park in one, my tenant parks in the other, and the reason I'm concerned is because a lot of my neighbors don't have parking, and I'm concerned for them and on their behalf.
Thank you. Wendy Goldman is our next speaker.
Thank you, City Clerk. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and fellow residents. First, a quick story about what prompted my civic engagement. Imagine waking up to find that 50% of street parking in your neighborhood had been erased overnight after over three years of new hotel construction. In addition, all of the 100-year-old shade trees that once lined your street were removed. No notification, no public meetings, or opportunities for discussion offered, only a vague official explanation with no responsibility for the action. You heard the fire hydrant had to be moved, new utility poles installed, but no parking alternatives. Your visitors and your neighbors were all pushed to park further away. Many residents decided to move, upset about losing street parking. After they left, their apartments were left vacant and kept off-market, leaving dozens of unoccupied units vacant for more than five years, resulting in a severe housing shortage, driving rents ever upward. There's time to improve housing availability and demand that landlords do their part to reduce the housing shortage. This created, this has created an artificial economy unsustainable, and I encourage you to pay attention to this fact and impose an urgent apartment vacancy tax or create a new policy to help restore these available units to the market. Your efforts to improve mobility may do more harm than good as it pushes hundreds of residents onto neighboring streets, creating conflict about scarce resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Rosenberg, Josh Johnson, Jackie Steele, Alyssa Miller, Steve B., and that is all of our speakers.
All right.
I know it's been a long night, but I just want to say to all you, thank you for hearing us out tonight. I want to say thank you, Lauren, for your thoughtful comments, but also want to say to the rest of the panel that I accused you of not caring, and that was unfair of me. And what you think is right is what you think is right, and whether I agree with it or not, you're entitled to that opinion. And to attack your character was, as I called before on God, it wasn't godly to do that, so I apologize for that. I'm in the minority here, where I, I'm going to jump subjects here, but I applaud President Trump for him, that fight for Charlie Kirk, and I do this because he had a godly soul in him. And a tragedy happened. And whether it was him or any one of you, I would say the same thing. Everyone has the right to have themselves honored because everyone has a soul of God in them. And the thing about Charlie is that he would ask questions. Now, tonight, I kind of made my point. I attacked. I didn't ask questions. And then going forward, I think, maybe that's a right tack with this, is to ask you guys questions. And then if you guys make your mind up, that is, it's better than me yelling at you guys. So, you know, I hope Charlie is with God. And I hope you guys, you know, when you go through this life, you're with God. And I hope that we can all come to a place in this community where we all see the same thing we want, is just a better day, better tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Steve. Thank you all so much for staying through the end of this meeting. We really appreciate you and your participation. We'll move to Councilmember comments and meeting attendance reports. I will just start on my right. Councilmember Hing?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as my council member attendance, meetings and attendance are concerned, I attended the World Overdose Day event in the Rainbow District. I attended the LGBTQ Victory Fund event here in West Hollywood. I attended the ABC LA Kids Book Fair in West Hollywood Park. It was a resounding success. I spoke with the organizer, Bonnie Hyde, and there were 5,500 tickets that were reserved for the book fair. And there were thousands of people there. And I actually want to thank Angelica Bernal, Moya Marquez, Annie Lovano, Jennifer Del Toro, and our amazing CLA staff, and also code enforcement for ushering the success of that event. So thank you to you all and your hard work. I attended the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce event. I presented a proclamation to Jeff Lewis. And that's it, Mayor. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Congrats on running a very efficient meeting tonight. We traveled together this morning at 5:00 in the morning, East Coast time, and we're still here, so congratulations. Want to thank and congratulate my colleague Danny Hing, who was given an award from the Victory Fund, what feels like three weeks ago at this point, what was this last weekend? So congratulations on your Rising Star Award, as well as I saw my other colleague Vice Mayor Heilman trying to run off the stage while Evan Low was trying to say very, very nice things about him, but that is in true John fashion. But congratulations, and I'm sure many more honors are coming your way. Additionally, I attended a number of community events, but at this late hour, I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I attended the Fountain Streetscape Project Community Meeting, Women's Equality Day Event, and ABC Foundation Kids Book Festival, which was all well-attended. I just wanted, in terms of consent calendar, comment on D1. That's the ordinance to designate local responsibility area fire hazard severity zone maps established by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection within the City of West Hollywood. And I would just ask that our planning department be very mindful of these new maps, especially as they look at upzoning throughout the city with the ZIP program. Wild land and urban density, as we have seen with the fires that happened in January of 2025, do not go well together. So I think that that really needs to be taken into consideration as we move forward with ZIP announcements. Oh, one other thing, I just want to, I want to thank the mayor for bringing forward a resolution declaring West Hollywood a nonviolent city. I appreciate that, but it is a little ironic that we had really a terrible violent act on Saturday night and, or Sunday morning, whichever it was. But I, it's not only about, you know, residents and what's happening in our city and country, but it's also about how we host. And I think it's, we really need to look at that because it's kind of scary. And so then announcements, September 27, 10:00 AM, Council Chambers. We're going to have a free screening of Quake Heroes, a Q&amp;A session, and a resource tables with disaster preparedness tips and tools. And then October is Disabilities Awareness Month with a wellness fair on October 9 in Plummer Park and the annual televised disability service awards on October 22 in Chambers. And you can check on the West Hollywood city calendar for specifics.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Thank you, and thank you for running a nice meeting tonight. I do support your item and thank you for bringing that forward, declaring West Hollywood a nonviolent city. And I agree with Councilmember Meister's comments. We need that, we need to communicate that to people who come to our city, particularly who come to our entertainment venues, that West Hollywood is a nonviolent city, and we expect that kind of behavior. I would ask, not tonight, but that Fannie give us an update at some point on the terrible incident that occurred over the weekend. I know that a lot of the Sheriff's Department had to respond to that and thank them for their work. I attended various community events, including the ABC Book Fair, which was wonderful, the Hollywood Food Coalition Pickleball fundraiser. I also attended the roller skating this weekend in West Hollywood Park. I also wanted to make a comment about D1, the fire maps. I think it's very important for us to recognize the impact that that will have on residents who will now have to make disclosures. It may affect their insurance rates. So I would ask our staff to look carefully at that and bring back any recommendations on how we might ameliorate the impact on our residents. The final comment I want to make is with respect to the flag. I know that staff was following our existing policy, but clearly the policy needs to be changed. When we are lowering flags to honor people, we need to make sure that we are honoring people whose values, whose actions, whose behavior is consistent with the values of the city. And certainly, we shouldn't be honoring people in that way who have acted in ways that are directly contrary to our values. So I fully support a revision to our flag policy. And perhaps this can be referred to our mayor and vice mayor, as so many things have been, and we can work on it in the upcoming months. Thank you.
Thank you. I will start with my meeting attendance as well. I attended the sanitation district meeting, the Metro Service Council meeting, the National League of Cities Transportation Committee meeting, the Clean Power Alliance Energy Committee meeting, the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency meeting. And somewhere in between all of that, I was, I became the vice chair of the League of California Cities Transportation Communications and Public Works Committee. So lots of work that we're doing on behalf of the city, but very honored to serve in these ways. And thank you also for appointing me as a voting delegate for the city for the upcoming conference next month. A big congratulations to Councilmember Hing on the recognition from the Victory Fund. Couple more recognitions. It is SoCal Transit Month, if you can believe it. Such a fabulous time where we're getting more people onboarded to the many transportation systems that exist. But it's a program run by Metro especially, and it was so great to have them here in the city. And I thank staff for the support to make the older adults program that they run possible in our city. Move L.A. also came to West Hollywood and hosted a Pink Pony Club ride on Metro. And we had a really great time riding that bus down to the Abbey. Just more things to help get people the experience, understand the community that is there when it comes to transit and the great fun and joy that can be had. You get to be a real passenger princess on the bus. And so I encourage everyone to do more of that. Next month is Disability Awareness Month. And October 9 is the Health and Wellness Fair. So thanks to our Disability Advisory Board members for their support on that and all the great people who will be participating. I encourage you to check it out. And thank you for the recognition of the item on becoming a nonviolent city. There are cities across the country that are taking really incredible action to bring these discussions to the community, to understand what it means in a multitude of ways. I know especially now, we're thinking about violence in very specific ways. But I also think about it through the language, through how we show up, how we behave around each other. I do just appreciate Steve's comments and coming back up and acknowledging a different way and a different approach. I think that's very much of the spirit of nonviolence as well. We must resist the urge to be destructive as we resist our own destruction for ourselves. So I just really appreciate that. And this Sunday is the International Day of Peace. So a very wonderful day to practice this in ourselves. Finally, I think, the WeHo Loves Local program officially launched. I'm really grateful to everyone who's made that possible. Visit West Hollywood, our partner's there, the Chamber of Commerce is promoting. If you haven't already, get your gift card. Let's see how this goes. I think we have over 50 participating businesses. You can get information from the Chamber, visit West Hollywood. There's a lot of places promoting it right now. But you can buy a gift card for $50 and have an extra amount loaded on there. We want to have you have more fun in the community and support our businesses too. So thank you, everyone, for a great meeting tonight. And we'll see you on October 6. Is that right? October 6, back here in Council Chambers. The meeting is adjourned. Have a good night. Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry, one more thing. September is National Disaster Preparedness Month. Get prepared. Meeting's adjourned.